Morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, March 16th. Our first item is to approve the agenda, and we do have one agenda addition, which is a request to approve two positions for the correctional, two correctional officer positions for the ones who are currently deployed, so.
Second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning? Nobody online? We do not. Anything there? Okay, all right. We'll move on then to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the bills and vouchers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Minutes from February 23rd.
Did we get them, or was that just not in my packet?
I do have them. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I just got A to C. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. We will now go into our routine 8:35 item with public health and our COVID update, and we have Kathy and Jamie here again this morning. Good morning, Kathy. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We handed out the usual weekly form with the data. Thing of importance that we see is the active cases are down from last week. They were 120 last week. They're now at 90. So, we're seeing more people, less cases, and more people getting out of isolation. The 14-day case rate is something we have been watching as well. That is at 25.96. That's still low. It's a little bit higher than we saw last week, but it's also a 14-day case rate that's delayed, so we're going to see probably a reduction in that the next week, the 14-day case rate because of the 90 active cases. So, that's looking good. Hospitalizations are stable, and our deaths are at 89. They were at 88 last week, so we had one additional COVID death that was recorded. And so, Minnesota is also seeing less numbers increase, so we're pretty stable with the numbers that we're seeing so far. The active cases by age range on the next page just shows where we're at currently, and the 25 to 29 are still the ones that we're seeing the most active cases in. And then the 60 to 64 bumped up a little bit, and the 30 to 34, but it's routinely the 25 to 29 this week. Cumulative cases are the 20 to 24, so that's on a general scale. The age range, hospitalizations again remain low, and the deaths, we had that additional death that was recorded from last week. And then hospitalizations in ICU again, stable across Minnesota and also currently within our region. We met with, we meet with the hospitals and on our Red River Valley Task Force as well as the North Dakota side, and so things are pretty stable across our metro area as well. And now I'll let Jamie, unless you have questions about the data, Jamie can talk about our vaccine administration.
Good morning. Okay, so looking at the data for total number of people with at least one dose of vaccine in Clay County, we're at 20.5% and statewide, 22.7. Total number of people with completed vaccine series, 10.7% of the population in Clay County and 13% of the statewide. People aged 50 to 64 with at least one dose, 29.4% in Clay County and 22.5% in Minnesota. And then people aged 65 with at least one dose of vaccine, 69.3 in Clay County and 75.6 in Minnesota. And then the total doses that we have administered by Clay County Public Health to date is 7,785. And then we've got the graph down there at the bottom that shows you that we administered 897 doses. We did receive less last week, and that is 578 of those are first doses and 319 of those were second doses. And so, our plan for this week is 1,700 doses. We have 200 of those that are second doses, and then we were offered 100 doses, and we begged and pleaded and received 1,200. So, that's what we will be doing this week. We are continuing to focus on adults aged 65 and over, anyone with underlying health conditions, and then workplace risk exposure is what our priorities are. So, in Tier 1B, we have those with rare conditions or disabilities, and in Tier 1B, in Phase 1B Tier 3, people aged 45 to 64 with one or more underlying medical condition, and people 18 to 44 with two or more medical conditions, and then also people aged 50 years or older living in multi-generational housing, which is not just a grandparent raising a child, but more than just two generations. And that's it. Otherwise, what we're doing is we're reaching out to food processors and those priority groups that are in Tier 3 and inviting them to sign up on our signup on the county website. We've got a link where anyone can go and sign up, and what will happen is when you're eligible for vaccine, we'll push that out to you to register and sign up for an appointment, so.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the data, because the majority of the folks getting the vaccination obviously are of older age, and so now we're seeing more active cases with our school-aged youth-type population. In your conversations with the schools, are you hearing percentages of teachers vaccinated? I mean, do we have a rough estimate on what you're seeing with the teacher population?
You know, all the schools in Clay County were offered the vaccine multiple times, so everybody that was in E-12. Some received it in other locations, some received it from us, but everybody has been offered, and when we meet with the superintendents, they're confident that everybody that wanted the vaccine has received it, so.
Okay.
I'm not, they didn't give us the percentages of what they thought, teachers that received it, but they really felt confident that they've had plenty of opportunity to receive the vaccine.
And then my follow-up question would be, I have heard that a booster shot for this will be required down the line. As we, I know it might be too, a lot to think about right now because we're dealing with the first round. Are you anticipating a booster shot needing to happen this fall when people are typically doing influenza boosters? What are you hearing on that?
You know, we're hearing nothing about that from MDH at this time. They said that, you know, the information is still being vetted out, but they have not provided any information about will there exactly be a booster this fall or not, so we haven't heard any, I know we hear rumblings in the national news, but nothing directly yet.
Well, and that's fine. I just want to make sure, as we all saw, the President signed the new recovery, and Clay County will see some funds come to us, and as we deal with the effects of COVID and the costs that the county may incur, I would guess that those next rounds of vaccination would be costly, and I want to make sure that the CARES Act Committee takes into account what the continuation of vaccination will cost, so I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, as much as I like to hear Kathy and Jamie talk every week, I was just wondering if our weekly reports are still necessary. I mean, could we go to every other week, or, I mean, we're, I mean, the updates are, I mean, COVID is important, is important, but do we need to report every week to show that we got 20 more of this, or 10 more of this, or whatever the case may be? I'm just wondering whether what your feelings are, do you want the weekly reports to continue? Because we're taking up their time doing it, too, so.
I guess my feeling on it is I think we could, we could have the materials provided to us. However, because the vaccine issues are constantly changing, I still think it's a good thing for our public to be able to have this as a resource to find out information and your report to this board. It's played back, and, you know, it gives all of our citizens an opportunity to, I know you're plenty busy and you'd probably rather not be here at times when there's many other things to do, but I think it's important. My feeling is it's really important for the public to be able to get that information on a weekly basis. Some of them have probably come to depend on getting it from here, so. Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I think there's, and this is a euphemism we've heard a lot, there's light at the end of the tunnel, but I think the next month or six weeks, particularly getting through spring break, there's going to be developments that we need to be aware of that may impact our community, especially with the college population we've got, and with the, once the J&amp;J gets here and the resurgence of some really large opportunities to vaccinate, I think the board being, or the commission being aware of what's going on and being able to react to help get locations or whatever we need. I think maybe six weeks from now will be, we'll really be hopefully looking at toning it down, but I think there's going to be some breaking issues until we get into the summer that we really ought to be apprised of and be able to respond to.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I kind of agree with Frank. I feel like as soon as we can start cutting them loose a little bit so that they can focus on getting as many citizens vaccinated as possible, and instead of coming to meetings, that would be great. So, as soon as we feel comfortable as a board with less updates, that would be a good move to make.
I'm not trying to lower the, I mean, we need to have information and stuff like that. It's just that looking at weekly reports that go up a little bit, they're down a little bit, and I was just wondering whether it's necessary to take up their time, and I'm okay with these weekly reports. I mean, I'm not the, I think it's very important that we're up to date on it, but just wondering whether.
Well, I do know, too, that one of our newspaper outlets locally here watches these meetings on a regular basis, and they're, and then their weekly paper that they put out, they put a recap of what's been talked about.
Yep.
And so, this is a source for our media to also get some additional information, and at this point in time, I'm inclined to say let's keep having you come here, and as Commissioner Ebinger said, let's look at it again four to six weeks and see how it develops.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I've just brought the thing up to see whether.
Nope, it's very good. Any other questions for them this morning?
Not a question, but just on your graph, as we all noted, 3/15 of 2020 was the first week that you'd given a report, and here we are, a year past, and I know we say this often, but continued thanks to you for your work in the community. We really appreciate it, and certainly would not know where to be without your presence in the community, so thank you.
So, I had one last thing, and thank you for the email, Kathy.
A little delayed.
So, last week I asked a question on behalf of someone regarding if they've had the vaccine, if they can test positive, and your answer in your email to me was, no, they cannot.
Correct.
So, those who have been vaccinated and they want to go to, leave the country or whatever, in order to get back, they have to, they have to have a negative test, and at least they won't show a positive test from the vaccine.
And my understanding is you might be okay going to Hawaii because you're still within the United States, so I think you're okay.
Well, that only applies to one commissioner.
The only place I go is Southern Clay County.
My research indicates as long as I pass a test within three days of arriving in Hawaii, they won't make me quarantine for public information.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Jamie, we'll see you again next week. All right, we are early for our public hearing.
Want to take the agenda addition?
Yes, yeah, let's do that. Let's take the, let's take the agenda addition. Request approval to fill two positions for correctional officers who are currently deployed with the military. Good morning. Good morning, Justin.
So, yes, we are requesting that we fill two correction officer positions, like the sheriff was here a couple of weeks ago with a deputy. We also have two corrections officers that are currently, are being deployed today. They've been out for a couple of weeks now, so we are asking to fill those positions. It does sound like they will be gone at least a year, so we're looking probably 12 to 16 months until they return. So, they will not be, I think as of this pay period, they're not receiving any type of benefits from the county, so it's not costing the county any money, so we're looking to fill those positions while they're deployed. We fully anticipate to have openings here in the future this year yet due to retirements and people resigning to kind of move those people into a permanent position. We're not looking to increase our staffing levels at any, in any way. I'm not looking to increase our budget. It would all be covered within our current budget.
We discussed this at, oh, excuse me, we discussed this at PIC, and they gave the full rundown of what's going to be happening as far as replacements, retirements coming up and stuff like that, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion. I do have a question.
Okay, Commissioner, motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since this is the, they're la, you're currently short because they've been out, has that affected your rotation in terms of numbers? And I know you have to have the staffing pattern approved.
So, we have had to fill quite a few positions with overtime.
Okay.
During PIC, you know, it got brought up about variable hour positions. As Darren is well aware, we've almost had a continuous pause for variable hour individuals, and it's been very, very difficult for us to find variable hour individuals. We did just a couple, maybe a month ago, get approval from the board to fill a vacant full-time position. We did move one of our variable hour positions into a full-time position, so we lost even more. So, yeah, it has been difficult to fill, fill some of the staffing positions.
But it's not been to a point where we've had to reduce capacity because of?
No. The capacity's still kind of reduced right now just due to the COVID restrictions that we're currently under.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the discussion was, right now, your staffing requirements are 51.
Yes.
And that is not going to change with this request?
No.
Your budget was budgeted based on 51. The intent are these two to be full-time?
Correct.
Yeah, and when the others come back, by then, there will be, you know, of retirements that are going to take place and so on, and that's something that will have to be dealt with for 2022, you know, but we'll have to look at that at that point in time.
Yes, we, we're not looking, like I said, to increase our staffing levels long-term over the 51. It would just be to replace those individuals that are deployed, and, you know, towards the end of the year, I mean, we anticipate in the middle of this summer here to have some openings due to retirements. We also anticipate openings at, towards the end of the year due to some just resignations, people leaving for other positions. So, we probably wouldn't be looking to fill those positions just to maintain our numbers as we get closer to those individuals that are deployed coming back to work.
And the 51, that's, the potential for that to change would be based on population?
Correct.
Because if the DOC comes out and says, okay, now your population is this, you've gone to the next level, which requires additional staffing, correct?
Correct.
So, that's something that is, would be population-based anyway?
Yeah, in general, with our staffing plan that we put together back in 2018 when we built the facility, it's difficult to give an overall population number because it more has to do with individual housing units, but it's kind of right around that 150 inmate population before we would have to increase. But like I said, it's a little difficult because it has to do with what the populations are in the individual housing units.
All right, well, this was, this was, as Commissioner Gross mentioned, this was talking about PIC, and it was recommended to move forward with it, so we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Justin, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for the, make sure and thank them for their service from us, please.
James is here, so I'll do that one.
James, do you want to, can we fit you in now?
Sure.
All right, let's do an annual update. About the right amount of time here, so.
Yeah, I'll make it.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I'll make it quick as possible. Okay, so I'm here for kind of reviewing 2020 and how that went. Kind of some background on the Juvenile Center. There's two major programs. One's a non-secure program, one's the secure program. The non-secure program is funded completely by Clay County. Will take youth from other counties as well, and in the state of Minnesota. That program has both delinquent and non-delinquent youth in it. Switch to the next slide. Our secure program, that's comprised of Clay County and then 10 other counties, nine in Minnesota, and then Cass County, North Dakota. Mission statement is WCRJC is a learning environment where the values of each individual are recognized, developed, and matured for the betterment of our community. What's a new one, 2020, in our non-secure program, we started that transitional program. That's been pretty successful. COVID had lots of problems with that because the COVID portion, a big piece of that is getting into the community, going to school, in regular school, getting out, having a job, et cetera. We were still able to do all that. The schools were closed, but we're still able to get youth jobs, get them involved. So, we had, you know, some people graduated, they got their diplomas through there, they got their GEDs, completed their outpatient CD, successfully went through that. So, we worked that the best we could, given, given the situation that we had.
I just want to pause you for a second because that is enormous, what you just said, making sure that these kids have a diploma, a GED, job training. That's incredibly life transforming for these individuals, and I know it's easy to kind of skim over it, but it's a huge, a huge deal, so thank you for what you said.
Yes, it's a lot of work that the youth have to do and our staff to get them there. I mean, it's the tangible things that are very difficult, and we helped them get over those hurdles. So, yeah, basically, what the Juvenile Center has for types of services we do, we do K-12 schooling, More Public Schools runs that. I mean, we, with COVID, that caused a lot of problems, but I think our IT department in Clay County here really helped us out. The schools' IT department, they have a good relationship between those two, that they're able to just link up, and our kids didn't miss a beat as far as going remote. So, we were able to, any other kid that belonged to More Public Schools that had to remote in from home or whatever, our kids had that same access here, so nothing was different. The GED program is a big one for us. A lot of our youth that we get are credit deficient. They, you know, they have, they maybe have four or five credits and they're 18 years old, so GED is probably the best route for them. Cognitive behavioral programming, that's the basis of our programming. That's how all of our staff interact with our youth. I put group and individual counseling. I think what's important about that is every kid's, when they come in there, is doing something slightly different. Although their schedules may look the same, they're all working and focusing on different things that they individually need. Religious services, chemical dependency, trauma therapy, different types of evaluation, sex offender treatment, DBT, community service options, and transitional services. Secure, so I'm just kind of, for the sake of time, I'm just going to go over secure stuff. So, secure is for Clay County. The graph on the left, you can see in 2020, that's the average number of youth that Clay County had in that facility throughout the year. You'll notice that the population fluctuates heavily, and that, that is very common. And what, what we do in the SCARE program as part of that collaborative with the 11-member counties is all the counties have this type of a thing where the populations fluctuate. So, when we all get together, it makes it easier to have a flatter line to budget. So, you know, Becker County could have the same thing, whereas Clay County's down, Becker County might be up, et cetera, vice versa. So, it, it works out very well, and that makes programming smooth, makes it continuous. 2020, overall, you can see the SCARE average drop per day for, for just the whole facility. COVID, as far as population-wise, our longer-term, our treatment residential programming, I guess, picked up in 2020 because detention short-term stays were down based on COVID.
Is that the right graph?
The right graph, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's overall for the SCARE facility average per day. One thing I do want to talk about in this next slide, and there's a lot of misinformation out there about juvenile detention centers and juvenile facilities, et cetera. This is a quote from a newspaper in Minnesota, a major newspaper in Minnesota, that I'm quoting here. It says, "Some 75% of juvenile arrests in Minnesota are for nonviolent offenses, often acts that are only unlawful because of one's age: truancy, curfew violations, running away, underage possession of alcohol and tobacco." I can tell you that in Clay County and every single facility licensed by the Department of Corrections, that number is zero. That's a lot of misinformation out there, and it's important to understand the difference of what's going on. So, the offense breakdown that I have up here is most youth have, every, secure detention is used as a very last resort, very last resort. The judges, defense, everybody, the state, always try community-based things first, always do, okay? It always happens. A kid commits a robbery, does something violent. If there's somebody in the home that can take care of him somewhat, they feel like they can, they're going to try that. They're going to try the community-based alternatives. What happens sometimes is the community-based alternatives aren't effective for the youth because the youth isn't going to school, the youth isn't going to their counseling, the youth isn't remaining drug-free, the youth continues to commit crime. So, what happens then is a probation violation. So, oftentimes, when people skew statistics, they look at it and they say, Hugh's arrested for truancy. Well, no, it's because the probation officer hasn't been able to find this kid for about two months, and finally found him. Actually, he's being detained on robbery. That's what his original offense is. That's what it is. So, that's really the background in a nutshell of all these things. So, of all of our intakes in 2020, slightly over half, about half, had some sort of violent type of offense. I know that our, was it our workman's comp, kind of started dwindling up in the last couple of years. The youth are getting more violent. Our staff have been dealing with it very well. Property crimes, it's about 20%. And then societal, I guess, property crimes, I didn't know what to put. I just put illegal firearm possession in property crimes because they didn't use it to harm anybody in that instance that they're they didn't use it to harm anybody within the, that instance that they're being detained for. It was like, they had, um, some drugs on them, and they also had a handgun, and you're seventeen. Well, tha, that, that's not good. Um, so that's where we're going with that. So that's why I wanted to really make that clear, is that there's a lot of that misinformation out there that's, that's actually very dangerous when it comes to, um, policymaking and policy decision-making. Uh, I wanna get into what, what we're really gearing toward and what we do. I think that we're, we're not perfect at it by any means. We're, we're making strides in that direction, thanks to this board and the support that we get. Adverse childhood experiences, it's been well-known for about ten years, it's been out there, it's been hammered. It measures basically three demands: abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. Um, youth, um, coming into secured detentions have a significant moor of ACEs while in their homes and in their communities prior to placement. So it's very important to realize that auto-home placement should be a last resort, but sometimes auto-home placement's very necessary because these youth are in homes and in situations that are very traumatizing for them, okay? And we gotta have trauma-informed care when we work in our facility because bringing our youth into our facility also could cause additional trauma because they could have a brother in that house, a sister, a sibling, somebody that they connect with, that they're fearful now, that now they're gone, they can't look out for, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So everybody's situation's different. So we gotta handle that very carefully. Um, and I think that we have been doing a decent job. We've been making strides in that direction, so that's why I put this in there for the 2021, is this is a big move that we made in 2020, thanks to your support. Um, basically, Clay County's response to the trauma and the data that, um, that we've had is Clay County's increased trauma therapy in juvenile centers, and this is absolutely unheard of. There was over two thousand five hundred and fifty hours of individual psychotherapy, trauma-specific, done in that secure program. That's one-on-one counseling, that is done by a psychotherapist, that is, that is, the, you're not gonna get anything better than the community. Um, they are getting that inside that facility. An additional eight hundred and forty-five hours, um, the psychotherapists were conducting, um, assessments, consulting our staff, and telling our staff how to work with individual youth a little bit differently, because again, everybody's plan is a little bit different. Um, so we've really taken on that trauma-informed care in our facility, and we've been moving ahead with that. COVID effect, um, the, the COVID effect on our facility, really, um, thanks to this board and the taxpayers, that they're really, COVID didn't really bother our program much. It, our staff face masked up, hand washing, sanitizing, a little bit more cleaning, but as far as programming, it didn't, it didn't interrupt it much. So I just kinda, take your time, I just, has anybody got any questions for me?
How are we doing, um, this year to date so far with non-member usage of our?
Probably on pace, we're probably about a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Okay. So, um, yeah, last, last year, last two years, uh, we've, we've actually had revenues over, um, over projected by close to a million dollars in that facility. And, you know, that wasn't, it wasn't unexpected. Uh, it was something that, we knew that based on our programming, that, um, if we offered it, they would come, because it's a good deal. Um, I just wanna say that, just like our adult correctional facility, our juvenile detention facility here in Clay County is recognized throughout the state as one of the best. And, um, and you and your staff are the ones who, um, deserve all the accolades for that. And, and, um, congratulations on, on what you're doing. And, and we've, we've told all of our departments, this COVID has, um, made the, made everybody's life a little bit more difficult, and you've gone through that very well. And, uh, I'm anxious to hear a little bit more, and I'm hopeful that we can get a little bit more into this non-secure thing, and two, with that being, these kids being able to even expand even more in what you're doing there. I think it's great.
Yeah.
And then I, I'm gonna look this way. I see Commissioner Gross had his hand up first.
I'm just gonna expand a little bit more. You say you're gonna expand that program. Are there more counties that want in on this program, or, or would we have room for them if they would ask?
Well, let, let me answer that on behalf of our, I chair that.
Yeah, I mean, I know we got a twenty-year contract, I think.
Yeah, well, I, I, I chair that committee, and I think it's, I think the members, um, would prefer we not expand the membership. Um, I, you know, I think they're still willing to come as non-members. Um, I, I just, from an overall standpoint, I think, you know, I think the group has decided that the, that we're kinda big enough right now in terms of members. And, you know, the, the more members you get, uh, as that thing fills up, we don't wanna get into the problems that we had a few years ago, where even, even Clay County itself didn't have enough, there weren't enough beds there for our own kids to go in. So we, so we always wanna try to find that balance, Commissioner Gross. And so, so I think that's kinda where, where we're at with that. Um, we, and besides that, the, the non-member rate, we get a little bit more revenue from that, so.
I was just wondering, since we expanded.
Yeah.
Facility and stuff like that.
Yeah.
No, that's great. I mean, I, doing great work there. I just wanted to know if the, if there's more counties that have requested or anything like that. Not that we would take them or something like that, but.
Commissioner Ebringer, did you wanna comment?
Yeah, I, first, I, I wanted to thank James for taking time. He and his staff gave me a tour of the facility. I'm embarrassed to say that, um, having been a police chief here for twelve years, I was not familiar with that facility to the extent I needed to be as a commissioner. Um, in my former life, uh, before I came to, to Minnesota, I ran a violent juvenile unit, uh, in a metropolitan police department. And we used to feel like we were throwing them in the hole. It wasn't a, it was a standard juvenile facility, but they weren't gonna come out any better, and you hope they didn't come out any worse. And I'm gonna tell you, what you people do over there is way beyond the pale. Uh, the, the treatment for kids, for the trauma, that every kid that is in there, and you were right about how it's filtered. If the community is gonna be able to help these kids, the, the juvenile courts make sure they go through the systems that would, would address their needs. If they have to come in, they're not responding to the opportunities in the community. Instead of being punitive, you give them more opportunities. The counseling, the psychiatric, the, the addressing their trauma. At transitional units, amazing. It's great you can get these kids a GED, or get them out of high school, get them lined up for college. They, they were helping a young lady there do her college application when I was there. These are things they don't get from the family. They learn how to cook meals, how to shop. You give them life skills. I walked away from there feeling really, really good, like I do with our correctional facility, about what we do in this county for people, and people that need it the most. So I'm proud, uh, that we can be part of that. Uh, Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell were a big part of getting, this whole commission was. We're, we're instrumental in getting this supported and built up the way it is, so I'm not here to take any credit. I just want the public to know, this is a remarkable facility. And, and I'm grateful that we can support it.
You know, um, piggyback on that, um, when we were looking at our expansion, uh, going in a few years ago, um, one of the, um, Sheriff Laney from Cass County had come over and talked to us, and, um, he was so impressed with, that we don't just incarcerate these kids, we give them an education, plus a lot of other things. And it was, it was for that reason that, um, Cass County, um, was very happy to, um, enter in and, and become our newest member. And they brought two and a half million dollars to the table to help us, um, expand that facility. And it all goes to what Commissioner Ebringer just talked about, i, is that, and why we're, um, we get accolades from all over the state regarding our facility. So it's just, it's really tremendous. Commissioner Kaylee?
I'm a momma with a big marshmallow heart, and I really do look at all the kids in our community as my children. And I just wanna thank you and your staff for taking care of our children.
All right. Good work.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner?
Thank you. All right, we're a little bit behind now, but we will go into our next item, and it's a public hearing. And a request from William Borgan for platted major subdivision, Red Rock Estates.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to open the public hearing for Borgan.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Uh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carry. The hearing is open, and, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt for some, um, we've got, we certainly have attachment C in our packet that gives a lot of the information that we've all had an opportunity to look at, so.
Mr. Chair, I might make a note. I think we do have some participants online, and having participated last week online, if you're speaking, you need to speak into a microphone. If anybody's, um, going to provide testimony, just so that online participants can also hear, thank you.
Yeah, so anybody in our audience who cares to speak, make sure we, we'll get a microphone to you. There's one up at the podium up there, so. Okay, Matt?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, this is a request for a major platted subdivision, um, called Red Rock Estates, from Bill Borgan. And what the applicant is seeking is approval for a three-lot subdivision, uh, in Oakport Township. So at the February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting, uh, the Planning Commission made the recommendation to approve this request. Um, they waived their right to review the final plat, and they just had one, um, change, and that's updating the, Board of Commissioners Chair signature from Frank Gross to Kevin Campbell. So, just some information about the parcel itself. Uh, it's a hundred and thirty-acre parcel. It's zoned agricultural general. It's currently agriculture. Uh, the surrounding land use is agriculture and residential, so this is kind of an area of the county in Oakport Township where there's been a lot of residential development that's happened over the years, and I believe it kinda started in the nineteen forties with the, um, Sweeney subdivision. Um, there's been Anderson Acres, one through three, I wanna say, uh, Borgan Fields. Um, so there's been a lot of, and the most recently, uh, Linden Trails. Uh, so there's been a lot of, of development in this area. I think it's, for a couple reasons. Um, one, it's not in any flood plain, and two, it's, it's close to the FM area. So this is the, the plat, it's kinda hard to see, but essentially you have, um, two lots along, um, County Road Nine. They're six-acre lots, uh, and then one larger out lot that would, it's about a hundred and eighteen acres, and it would stay in, in agricultural production. So, this is a Torrance property. It's a little di, different than like an abstract. And so that's the reason why that, um, larger hundred and eighteen acres wasn't, was included in this, is just because it's all kind of in this Torrance system. Uh, some policy considerations. We have a land use goal on our comprehensive plan to support the long-term protection of agriculture. Uh, and then to plan for the orderly and efficient growth in residential development in the county, and planned land uses and implement standards to minimize land use conflicts. And so even with the, the protection of, of agriculture in our county, we do allow for, um, subdivision development just to, for landowners to, you know, maximize the, the use of, of their, and value of their property. So a subdivision by registration of plat is required, um, when you're making one or more non-residential lots, so a commercial lot, or three or more lots, where you might have two or more developable, developable residential lots, and then the remainder of the parcel would be three lots. Uh, one thing that always comes up with these subdivisions is, is traffic control, access management. So this is from, from our, um, our traffic ordinance, or, and the, the spacing on this road between accesses is one of the main things to look at. Uh, there should be about three hundred and thirty feet between driveway accesses, and I think the, the lot widths on this are close to four hundred feet. So, um, the highway department has looked into that. They say there's adequate spacing, um, for these, for these lots. So you can see it's, um, looking at the, the elevation change, it's pretty flat in this area. There's really not a lot of relief, uh, and that in turn impacts hydrology. And, so with this, and one thing I wanna point out here is, so this area right here, and this would be Lot Three, is tiled. And so that tile drainage all goes up to Eightieth Avenue here before going west. Um, there is a ditch that runs through kinda the western extent of Lot Three, and that used to take, I think, water from, from the south, but now that actually goes through a, um, through a tile line here out to, to the roadside ditch and then north. And then there used to be a, this is, I'm working on kinda outdated information here, so I got some updated information, which is nice. Um, this ditch was actually modified by the landowner, and it actually now is filled in here and it goes and connects up with this ditch here. So, uh, kinda reducing the amount of, of runoff and drainage that's going, um, to County Road Nine here. So looking at the soils, um, uh, the entire parcel is, is farmland, uh, prime farmland. Uh, the, the, according to the soils data that I have, the, the better farmland is on the eastern half of this parcel. This would all be considered prime farmland if it was drained, so if it had, had tiling or, or some other kinda drainage, um, going on. Uh, improvement plans, the, the applicant doesn't have any plans for restrictive covenants. Uh, the lots are adequate for well and septic. The third lot, um, will continue to be farmed. Each landowner, before they, um, before they have an approved building permit for, for a house, they have to sign a land use notification and that note, and record it in the county recorder's office, basically saying that, um, you're gonna live in an agricultural area. You gotta be able to live with and, and accept the, the realities of, of living in an, in an ag area. One thing that we've also sent out to some of the other, um, landowners in this area when they've, for new development, is a ditch cleaning notice, just because that, that ditch that's on the, on the, yeah, the east side of, of Nine is really, it's just, there's not a lot of gra, it's flat. Um, so there can be some standing water in it. And, and it's not a, I've talked to the watershed district as well as highway department. It, it's not like a, gonna cause like a overland flooding issue or any sort of flooding issues. It's just more of a, a mosquito, mosquito breeding grounds, so. Yeah. And so that, that ditch notice just says, hey, it's your responsibility to keep that ditch, ditch clean, um, vegetation and debris and things like that. We did get some comments. Um, there are some neighbor concerns about impacts of runoff and drainage to the surrounding properties. So with those concerns, and that was heard at the last Planning Commission meeting, um, the highway department staff and I met with watershed district staff. We just talked about drainage in the area. Uh, there's been some drainage improvements on, uh, the ditch that runs east-west along. We just talked about drainage in the area, there's been some drainage improvements on the ditch that runs east-west along 80th Avenue, that's been widened a bit. The watershed district also feels that if they build their homes high enough, won't be, won't be an issue at the same grade as the road essentially. And then also with converting these lots from ag land to farmland, the watershed district basically said there's going to be a lot more infiltration into the ground, just with grass and trees and things like that. And that's going to significantly reduce runoff, especially on six acre parcels. And even without all of that, they, their opinion was that flooding, overland flooding are, is not really that big of a deal here. It's just that the water moves slowly, there's standing water. The Highway Department did have a preference for shared access between these two lots. The issue with that is that there are utilities kind of right on the property line, so moving those for a shared access would be difficult. And after we talked to the watershed district about some of these drainage concerns, the, I guess the Highway Department, they, as long as the spacing requirements could be met, they were fine with it, with just having two accesses. Oakport Township did approve this at their March meeting, their one, their main concern is further development on 80th Avenue, so that's along here. They would prefer not to see any more development here, just because this is, this is a township road and they're concerned about drainage and impacts to the road. Because, okay, because this is, excuse me, because this is a, not a cluster subdivision and it's not a, being proposed on land that's either wooded or it has marginal soils. The applicant, if this is approved, would still have to go to the Planning Commission and get a conditional use permit for this. And that actually is scheduled for this evening if you approve this. The conditional use permit essentially, in this case, would act as almost like the restrictive covenants. And actually I think they'd be a little more binding and enforceable than restrictive covenants, so. And I did have in your packet some kind of recommended restrictive covenants, I believe.
The six recommendations, is that what you're?
Yeah, that Lot Three must not be developed for residential use, property owners might, must sign a land use notification, property owners must sign and record a drainage notification. Residential structures must be at the same grade as County Nine. Any land disturbance greater than one acre requires a construction stormwater permit and stormwater pollution prevention plan, that's a PCA thing. And then any other conditions that you would deem necessary that you'd want to recommend to the Planning Commission?
And then.
Commissioner Moso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of those, those items that you want signed, that will be something that the county will provide when someone comes in for a building permit or the Land Records Recorder's Office, is that what you're saying?
Yep. So I remember many years ago being in that area during flooding and the east side of Nine is really, was really susceptible to overland flooding from the Buffalo River. I do know that Anderson Edition had petitioned and had flood walls put up around their addition and this is just to the north of that, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So I, I guess, I just, I, I really think that that condition in there about elevating to the height of County Nine is of significant importance. You know, I, I don't want any surprises for a future homeowner there when all of a sudden the rivers rise again. It seems to me that Nine was a real protection area for the west side, for the development that the Borgans did on the west side and, and going up further north to Brendan Mule's Edition, that was way up closer to 26. So I, you know, I'm going to certainly support this request, but I think it's really important that, that we emphasize the necessity of, of, that building elevation be what it is. Yeah, so the applicant, we have people with masks on here, so I can't recognize if Bill's here, is that Bill in the corner? Bill, good morning. I don't know if you have any comments other than what Matt's talked about here or, yeah, please go to the microphone and, and, you know, and I. Yeah, and you can, you can remove your mask too to talk if you'd like to, but again, I, you know, I think, I, hopefully you'll understand my concerns about the issues regarding water, you know, so. Well, good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Yeah, I've, you know, there's, there's two homes that are being built out there right now and they both built up to Highway Nine elevations and I've told all of them that. A few things have changed in that section of land since the 97 flood.
Right.
Both the two east quarters are now drain tiled, there's, there is no inlet into that section anymore. All that, those two east quarters are drain tiled and they're gravity fed to the ditch that goes to the Buffalo River on the east side of the, travel road to the mountain. Also, all of the Anderson Acres, yes, you know, that is diaked and there is a culvert that runs through Highway Nine to the west side of it, so that, none of that water goes to the north there either. The problem there has always been from the intersection of 80th Avenue and 40th Street or Highway Nine to the west, it's very flat. Linden Trails widened the ditch for a quarter of a mile, which will improve that quite a bit. Also, from the quarter mile line west of that intersection to the half mile line, the people that rent my land cleaned it out, it was full of cattails. For some reason, from, from the half mile line west, in my opinion, is where the problem with all that drainage has been. That, that half mile has always been able to be mowed and there's grass in it and it's kept nice, but my half mile is always wet. And so I feel like it's from there west is where the problem has been for that, for that quarter of land. But ever since the drain tile and no inlets into that section and Anderson Development draining to the west through Highway Nine, there have not been any water issues there.
I, I think from the standpoint of what we have to do today, Matt, is we're, we're basically being asked to approve the plat itself, correct?
That's correct.
So any, any conditions that have been talked about, that you talked about today will be conditions that the Planning Commission will deal with on individual applications for building, is that correct?
Well, yes and no, so I think on, on the documents that we have from Matt today, there are six policies that he would like us to approve. And then in addition, when they come to the Planning Commission tonight, then we can talk about additional conditions going forward.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. And you've seen those policy recommendations?
I've looked through them, yes.
And you're okay there?
Yes. Very good. I guess I haven't, I'm not sure what they all are, I know about the elevation raising the homes up and I had talked to Matt about the single point access, the driveways are, the lots are 393 feet wide. And I know there's a 330 foot recommendation or requirement.
And you got plenty of room for your septic systems and?
You know, all the lots are six acre lots.
Right.
And I put them six acre lots because there is a, there is a 10 acre home in the northwest corner of that section. And I wanted the east line of his property be, property to be the east line of my property. I have no intention of developing the rest of that quarter and I wanted that farmland straight.
Are there any other?
Okay, any other, do we have any other public comments? Any other, any online comments regarding this?
Colleen, is there anyone on teams?
Okay. All right, any other, while we, while we're still on the, in the hearing, do we?
Not for this hearing, no.
Okay. All right, it appears we have nobody else on teams for, public for comment on this particular hearing. Do we have any other questions of Commissioners while we're still in public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Moso, second by Commissioner Gross to close the hearing, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, motion carried, okay, we have before us a request from the Planning Commission, what's the board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the request and then also making sure that it is reflective of the six policy guidelines that Matt provided. Would you like me to read them?
Where are they in this packet?
First page.
First page, so the six policy would be, one, Lot Three must not be developed for residential use. Number two, property owners must sign and record a land use notification. Number three, property owners must sign and record a drainage notification. Four, residential structures must be at the same grade as County Road Nine. Five, any land disturbance greater than one acre requires a construction stormwater permit and stormwater pollution prevention plan. And six, any other conditions the county board may, sorry, deem necessary, which I don't believe applies.
All right, so we have.
Just a motion.
That was a motion?
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Moso, second by Commissioner Kaylee, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carried, all right.
Thanks, Bill.
That is approved, Mr. Borgan. Okay, our next public hearing is a petition from Dribble Properties LLC for text amendment to the development code.
Make a motion over the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed the same, motion carried, Matt.
All right. So this is a petition for a text amendment to the Clay County Development Code, our county use table, which basically defines all of the uses that are permissible in our zoning districts. This request originally had started out as a request for service business use as well as wholesale business, warehouse and storage units, which in our table we have all lumped into one use, which I think they should probably be separate uses in my opinion, but. And that request, the applicant made the request to withdraw that from consideration, so just looking at the, the service business as an interim use today. And so I don't know if you had, if you would like me to go through some of the policy considerations in the comprehensive plan or if you had a chance to review those in your packet, I certainly can, just kind of touch over them. The big one being that to establish a comprehensive growth management strategy for Clay County, promoting orderly and efficient development, working with cities and townships within Clay County to identify planned urban growth areas. And then planning for the orderly and efficient growth of commercial and industrial development in the county. Through the application of appropriate zoning districts and regulation. We're, you know, the two policies with that, encouraging new commercial and industrial developments that require public sewer and water to locate in the cities of the county. And then encouraging commercial and industrial developments which do not need public sewer and water to locate within planned urban growth areas with adequate road service. I just want to give you a little bit of background on the urban expansion district, it was, it was originally one zone, just called the urban expansion district. And the purpose was to promote that orderly and efficient development around incorporated communities and to provide these communities with some degree of development protection as expansion occurs. In 2018, this zoning district was kind of split into two tiers. There's a tier one, which is closer to Dilworth and Moorhead and kind of more followed their, their, kind of their future land use plans and, and planned growth areas. And then tier two is that area farther out, this is all within the two mile extraterritorial jurisdiction of Dilworth and Moorhead. Tier two are the areas that are farther out, that it's a little more flexible in uses that are allowed, just because there's probably no plan to annex those areas in the next 20 years. And so this is kind of what it looks like, the blue is tier one, the purple is tier two. So on, at the February 23rd Planning Commission meeting, the applicant withdrew that request for wholesale business, warehouse and storage, just wanted to focus on service businesses. And there's a set of standards for service businesses in this urban expansion zoning districts that was developed by Clay County in collaboration with the cities of Dilworth and Moorhead. And these are those standards. So standards for a service business, one is the service business definition, it's, it's a retail business that offers services primary, rather than products, is the primary business. So with a service business, it would be a lot of, a lot of the work is not actually happening at the location, it's happening out in, in people's homes. In this particular instance, the applicant operates a business called Safe Basements and they do like basement and foundation work and repair for residents in Minnesota and North Dakota. This was originally requested as a conditional use, the Planning Commission wants, made the, thinks that this would be fit better as an interim use in the urban expansion tier one zoning district and only having one interim use permitted per lot. And then this set of nine standards, so the nine standards that, that I kind of developed with the cities of Dilworth and Moorhead, these are based off of our interim use home occupation standards. So if you have a home and say a big building and you want to start like a plumbing business for say, and you live in the urban expansion tier one zoning district, you could, that would be allowed as an interim use, but you would have to live on the property. If you just had a big building and no home and you wanted to do a similar business, currently as it stands right now, you could not do that. So these standards were essentially kind of modeled after that home occupation, those home occupation standards. So the first one being limited to existing structures. Employees, the number of allowable employees set by the Planning Commission with considerations for traffic, parking, utilities and surrounding properties. And after some discussion, they came to like 10 full-time equivalents, signs, one non.
So can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
The way number two reads, I, I read that and the, it seems to conflict within itself to me. Because it says the number of allowable employees will be set by the Planning Commission, but then the very last sentence is no business shall have more than one full-time equivalent.
Oh, it should say 10.
It says one.
Oh, that's, that's a typo.
Oh, mine says one.
That would be a very small business.
Oh, okay, so I just, I just, I.
My apologies.
When I, when I was reading through this, I actually circled that because I thought it didn't make sense.
Yeah, no, that, that would not make sense.
Okay, okay. Sorry, you can continue.
All right. So for signs, this is basically from same, from our home occupation standard, maximum 32 square foot sign to advertise the business on site. Traffic in roads, traffic generated shall be considered by the Planning Commission. And the traffic generated by the service business shall not exceed what's reasonable for the area in which it's located and the road adjacent to the service business. Looking at a performance standard of no equipment or processes that would create noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, any nuisance conditions essentially to surrounding properties. Buffering may be required by the Planning Commission, either trees, shrubs, fences, whatever might be appropriate. Utilities, that you shall not create usage exceeding the capacity of available onsite sewage treatment and drinking water. And this you should not prematurely stimulate investment in public utilities. Parking, parking spaces may be required by the Planning Commission. And then inspections, this is something we do with our home occupation interim use permits is we just inspect them every five years for compliance and conditions.
Just as a point, that's on page eight. You're on a different section, I think.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was looking at the draft minutes where it had the one and I see now.
Oh.
I'm following.
Well, now we have a correction for the draft minutes.
There you go.
Later tonight, so.
So when you do your minutes tonight, make sure you change that from one to-
All right, will do. We did get some feedback on the business standards from the applicant. The applicant is agreeable, the standards three through nine, but does have some concerns with one and two, that being limiting to an existing structure. Then the number of employees, I know just if a business is looking to grow, those are two kind of major constraints. And the neighboring business, Mud Pumpers Mud Jacking is also interested in expanding. And they've been around there since the 90s. They're currently what we would call a legal non-conforming business in that they were legal, operating legally, but then the code, the zoning changed. And so they're continuing to operate, but they just can't expand.
Just one question. You said something about a business, if they operated a business out of their home, could someone build a house there?
Yeah, yeah.
You can't put a business in there, but you could put a house in there?
Yep.
Okay. But you couldn't do a business, if you build that house there, you couldn't do a business out of that house?
You could if you applied for an interim use permit and you lived there. You were the, you know, the main business owner, yeah.
That, Matt, that when you talk about that mud jacking business was there and they're basically grandfathered in, I guess.
Yeah.
Lack of a better word to use there, but that runs with the land?
Yes.
And, but if somebody else, if they were to sell that and somebody else purchased it and they were to change the use?
They could change the use, but it would have to be less intense than the current use. It couldn't be more intense. So they'd have to, I mean, it could be the same business, just maybe if it's a smaller operation or something like that, or a different business that's, has less of an impact, so.
That's the way the code reads, right?
Yep. And that's just based off of state statute as well.
Okay.
Some policy considerations, just with, in regards to one and two about allowing for expansions, is that allowing an expansion or additional structures in the, in this urban expansion tier one, excuse me, zoning district may, may not be consistent with the ordinance. And it may be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. So that's kind of, the issue there is that the whole purpose of the urban expansion district is to, is in recognition that in the next 20 years, these areas are going to be annexed by either the city of Morehead or the city of Dilworth. They have a plan or an idea of what they want or what their land use will be for those, for those properties when they're annexed. And so if you're looking at doing any sort of major expansions or anything like that, you would be essentially taking that property further away from its future intended use. But at the same time, right, the way that it's set up right now, the property has a, like, there are properties that have large buildings on them that could be used commercially that are in the urban expansion district. And if they're not allowed to be used in the, in, basically if they, if you can't operate a business out of them, there really, there's really not a whole lot you can do with that property. So that's kind of the conflict there. And then just want to look at, just, this is where the applicant's property is in Dilworth, or outside of Dilworth. And then, and then this is Dilworth's future land use plan. So the yellow is basically low-density residential. Red is commercial, orange is rural residential, or medium-density residential. So you can kind of see where, that it's in that residential spot. So we did get comments in favor and opposition from neighbors. We did, as I said, I worked with the cities of Dilworth and Morehead on these proposed standards. They both expressed that they're satisfied with the standards. So it's up to you on what you want to do.
Okay. All right. Comments from the public regarding this? You want to use, and then if you can state your name for the record for us, please, we're in a public hearing, so.
I'm Pedro Rodriguez. I'm a neighbor from this property he's talking about. And now you don't see what can be a problem for this Jesse Treble to be hooked up to the water, you know? Because since he came into the, bought the property, he cleaned up the property 100%. He's cleaner than ever been. And only the people opposed to be hooked up is one person. And that person has been against the two previous owners, you know? And, and I understand the previous owners, you know? They never clean up the property. They have a curse all over the place, trees, butches, everything, you know? It was a mess. And I think pretty much the rest of the neighbors besides me are happy that this guy come and clean up the property. And I moved there in 1992. And when we got hooked up to the water line, only two people, we owned the line. And we got from the city of Dilworth agreement to hook up 13 lines from four-inch line, only if it be 13-inch, one-inch lines. And that's what this man, Jesse, want to hook up, one-inch line. I don't see any why it cannot be fighting about it or arguing about it to be hooked up.
So you're supporting this request?
Yes, 100%.
Okay.
Because like I said, you know, I like to live and clean property and I don't like people around me.
I know exactly where you're at and you have it nice out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have the applicant on virtually too.
Okay.
Bring him up.
If the applicants, any comments you care to make? We might have, is there, are they muted?
The teams meeting on-
Yeah, I lost my mouse here, okay.
Okay, I think I've got it. My name is Jesse Treble. I am the applicant. And like Pedro said, we did clean up the property when we got there and we have nothing but good intentions. We would just like the opportunity to run our business out of the property as, just like the previous owners. So it was a commercial building built in the 70s, a steel frame building on 14 acres that's completely screened by trees. We don't make any noise or pollution. We would just like the opportunity to run our business out of there. We only would need a one-inch line to run a bathroom and all of our employees go off-site to work. Because it has 14 acres and it's a 10,000 square foot building, steel frame, commercial building, we would like the opportunity to potentially have more than 10 employees at some point and grow our business at the rate, you know, of 10% a year or so. We've been in business for about 30 years. We run a very reputable business and we're an asset to every community that we ever come to because we give really good, higher-than-average paying jobs and we offer a really good service to the community. So we would definitely appreciate your consideration to continue to do business there as it had been done by the previous two owners. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comment? Is that Peyton? Okay. Good morning Peyton from the city of Dilworth.
Good morning, thank you commissioners. Peyton Masseram with the city of Dilworth. First and foremost, thank you to Matt and the city of Morehead. We work alongside them quite a bit in coming up with the requirements that you see in your packet today. A few things I didn't want to clarify that's getting lost in the shuffle here. This is not a request just for this property owner that will come at the interim use process. This is about amending the actual zoning ordinance, changing the land use code for this specific zoning district in which we worked with, again with Matt and the city of Morehead and come to an agreeable amount. The issue with the water line is a totally separate issue. It has nothing to do with this request. That goes to a separate agreement, that is between the property owners and a line that was extended out there way back when. So that doesn't really have any consideration here this morning as well. So we do support the application as Matt had presented. And we do want to caution against any further expansion because that would put the city of Dilworth and its comprehensive land use planning efforts at a disadvantage because it does reflect land use, or future land use as low-density residential. Any future expansion of a commercial facility gets us further away from that goal. And I'm sure the business is going to be tremendous there at that location and we're there to support it any way we can within the confines of the rules that are set forth this morning.
So Peyton, your concern and I'm assuming that the agreement that was worked out in this whole process with the city of Morehead yourself, as you mentioned, this isn't, this isn't a requested change for this particular applicant only, this is for all of tier one.
That's, that's correct.
And, and that becomes, that can become a bigger issue because what, what might seem to be okay for the applicant's individual parcel may not be in the best interest of Dilworth or Morehead in terms of the entire tier. And I think that's kind of-
It is. We didn't, luckily tier one is not a massive area. So we were able to go through, and Matt can probably talk about this a little more in a little more detail. We were able to look at them parcel by parcel. Some of the areas are assumed to stake and land. And some of them do have some structures on them as well. So that's why we felt the up to 10 full-time equivalents and the other restrictions in place would be a fair number, given the proximity to both of the cities.
So the modification, Matt, to the development code is what we're talking about here, correct? Which we're also redoing. Right? We're also looking-
The modification would be to the code, correct? And we would, hopefully, the next logical step after our comprehensive plan update would be an update to the code to reflect that new plan.
Right. So the concern on the part of the applicant where we have a restriction of 10 in terms of employees, there could still be a way moving forward where individually a request could be made to, to relook at that?
If it goes into the code as it's written, then no, you would have to go back and amend the code again.
But that, that could still be done as, through a consideration at that time?
Yes, yep.
Just like we're doing it today?
Yep, yep. And I should to, I should mention to you that, you know, just because this, if this were to pass, that doesn't necessarily mean that anyone can start opening up a business on any individual property. They would still have to go through the interim use permitting process and get approval from the Planning Commission on that as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mosel.
One, I want to say I appreciate the city of Morehead and the city of Dilworth's willingness to work with the planning department. I think this proposal looks significantly different today than it did in January and that really goes to the teamwork aspect of this. Some of you were on this board a few years ago when we dealt with a similar issue, land use issue in regard to tiers with the city of Morehead. And on the south side. And it really was a negotiation with landowners in the city and the county to make sure that we looked at this in a, in a reasonable way. I think it's important, and as Peyton said, to stress that this is a text amendment to the general code. There will be individual applications that come forth. And in the same way as we talked about with Bill Borgan's development, there will be individual restrictions or conditions placed on those applications and we can craft that as we see fit. The problem that I've seen with this process, just the way it has been, is that we typically are only reacting to this once there's an identified need. And our tiers have become antiquated because we're not looking at them in response to growth. We're just looking at them and then 20 years later, and then here's another development. So it seems like we're adjusting only for one development and I don't believe that's the case. I maintain that this is something that, and so does the rest of the Planning Commission, a conversation that we need to be having with the cities in terms of where their growth areas are so that we're not holding certain areas that don't seem logical for growth if another, if a city's looking at moving on the east side or the west side or south and north, that we're constantly looking at that to make sure it's a delicate balance between saving areas for municipalities and future growth, but also fostering environment in which people want to develop and live and operate businesses in Clay County. And, you know, I feel like this is appropriate. I do have concerns with the, with the employees. I mean, that's been something that was voiced at, at the Planning Commission, if it puts companies or businesses into a little bit of a box because it's limited with the 10 FTE, I personally have concerns with that one. But I do also see the concerns that the municipalities bring forward.
All right. Any other comments while we're in public hearing? Motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Do you want to give us a little summary of what their final request is to this board? I'm assuming you want us to approve the nine recommended standards?
Yeah, so the, the request would be to approve a service business as an interim use in the urban expansion district tier one with those, those nine standards as they are or if, you know, any changes to those that you would, you would see fit as well?
Okay, so, so once, so once again, this, this, this just, from a county standpoint, it just means that it's, it would be okay to do within the development code, still subject to Planning Commission review?
Yep, they, they would still have to get in and apply for an interim use permit from- Yep, they, they would still have to get in and apply for an interim use permit from the planning commission, yep.
And, and again, my knowledge when it comes to zoning issues, uh, any, so, um. For example, if you were to do additional subdivision or anything like that, that requires, uh, city approval in the two mile jurisdiction. Am I correct on that?
That is correct, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the request.
I'll make a second, but I'd like to have.
We have a second give back, Commissioner Mojo, and you have a question or comment?
Uh, my question would be if, um, knowing that these businesses have to be permitted afterwards, after this, um, getting interim use permits. Would this board be open to up to fifteen FTE? I think it gives, my, my concern is that, um, knowing some of the businesses that Commissioner Campbell and I have worked with on the CARES Act committee. There seems to be a, a threshold for employees that bump someone into another category where, where operating out of their home or property doesn't seem feasible. And that, that seemed to be twenty-one in terms of what we saw with those applications and wondering if fifteen would be a happy medium to prevent us having to look at this in six months.
Okay. I've got no problem amending my, uh, motion to fifteen if that's what, if that's what they want, but can we do that without, uh, going through a hearing again or whatever?
No, we're, I think we're, I think it's within our, um, ability.
We can, I'll, I'll go along with it.
Okay, so, so just hang on one second. So, um, you're looking at amending your motion to change, uh, criteria number two from ten to fifteen?
Yes.
And, and does that meet with your second?
Correct.
So, okay, so now we're up for discussion, uh, Commissioner Ebinger.
Just a question, is this going to require that, uh, we go back and get a, get a response from Morehead and from Dilworth to see if this is going to meet their, their needs?
Well, my response to that is that there still would be public hearings for any application received. So, um, I mean, the public, municipalities, county staff still have the opportunity to weigh in on each individual application. And so, I, I feel like that's the avenue for that.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Just a comment, I like that change to fifteen. Um, I'm the daughter of a small business owner and that feels a lot more comfortable to me, so.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Uh, this is Jesse Treble. If, if I may, um, would it be possible to, uh, per situation and based on the amount of land you have and how well it's screened and things like that? Have the opportunity to build on or add a building for, say, storing vehicles or whatever it might be? Um, because the way it sits, we wouldn't be able to build or put an office or whatever we may want to do, even storage sheds for our own personal use. Could that be, something in the text, uh, be per situation so you don't, you know, have someone in a neighborhood wanting to put up a big commercial building? But in our situation with fourteen acres and no one can see it anyhow, uh, not close the door on the opportunity to potentially add on to a building or build a new building?
Yes, I don't recall that, that is.
That is number one.
That's number one, limited to.
But I don't recall in terms of the planning commission, how did, how did we, did we discuss that? It certainly is, from the planning commission's perspective, it certainly is a concern because we hear often, um, from neighbors about outside storage being a nuisance and how indoor storage would be more.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo, I think the main concern would be from the cities of Morehead and, and Dilworth. You know, allowing new structures or expansions and, and kind of, um, taking, taking that property further away from its intended future use.
Does it have to do with, um, utilities more or is it not at all?
It would, that would depend on the type of business, I think. Um, if it's like a cold storage building, I don't think that that would be a huge issue. Um, if it's an expansion to an existing building, um.
So, here's where I get on all of this is we, we meet to discuss after the use, after the fact permits often. And so, what, what I struggle with, and I believe this wasn't after the use before, right? I mean, um, it was in operation and the county didn't know about it and so we're now, we're trying to make up. And so, what, what I get concerned with is, you know, if we have regulations that don't make sense. Then you have people, not necess- not Jesse, I'm not saying that Jesse, but then you have people that just say, well, I'm going to do it anyway because this is my land and this is the need of, of what it is. So, it is a, a delicate line and as you say, anything would have to be permitted anyhow, so I'm not, I don't know.
All right, so we've got, uh, we, we do have a motion in a second. As I know, we've had comments regarding, um, adjustments to item number one. And, you know, I, I have not had the opportunity to have dialogue with, uh, with the cities of, of Dilworth and Morehead regarding that issue. And I, you know, as Commissioner Mojo stated that, that we went through, um, somewhat of a contentious time, uh, uh, on a, on a tier one, um, project in a different area that in order to make it work, there was a lot of cooperation. And I, I, I just think that there's a cooperation factor that's been done here and there's some concerns about, um, you know, what might, you know, is this a future difference envisioned that a city might have with a corridor or something? I, I, I can't, I don't, without talking to them, I don't know. I, I would have preferred a preference that allows, uh, some modifications to structures based on a, a permit application where, you know, similar like to the, the other ones where the city still has an opportunity to go in and, and talk about it, uh, from the permitting process instead of the development code process.
So, could we add that though? Could we add a caveat that said there, um, service business must be in existing structures on the property unless an agreement from both municipalities is agreed, agreed on and it's permitted?
I think, I think we can add anything we want. That's, that's, that's why, that's why it comes to us for, for decision on the development code.
I agree with you. I don't want to upset the albatard, but I also want to make sure that we're thoughtful so that we're not revisiting this. And so, if you have a caveat that says you have to have, you know, same, same way we do with township approval.
Right.
Um, if you have something that says for number one, must be in existing structures on the property unless a proposal is provided with both municipalities and the county approving, then that allows the opportunity for something to happen.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo, as opposed to both municipalities, so say a property is in the city of Dilworth, would it just be that they would just have to go to Dilworth?
That's what I meant, sorry.
I think, I, I think, I think it would, I think what we're talking about here is it would be, it, the municipality that it's within its jurisdiction.
Yeah, okay.
That would be the one who would have to approve of it. And I, and I almost, I, I think that's a, a, a good opportunity here to, um, address the applicant's concern that, you know, and, and if, if he decides he wants to put another building up there, he needs to make that case before Dilworth. And, and, and we shouldn't stand in the way if, if they can come to some agreement there because we don't, we don't want to change our development code, uh, every other day for various reasons. So, if, if we could, uh, put something in there like that, and now again, I'm asking for another, uh, potential modification to your, uh, motion here.
Does that meet your motion Frank?
I don't even know where it started out at. No, yes, it'd be, be okay.
And mine as well.
Okay, so, um, the motion then was to approve with the nine conditions with a change in condition number one that, or, or standard number one that would allow additional structures, uh, on the property, subject to approval by the city entity within its jurisdiction.
Yep.
Correct? And then the second one would be changing the, um, full-time equivalents from ten to fifteen. That's, that's what's within our motion. And then the other, uh, seven conditions remain intact. Any, are we all good on what the motion is now? Okay, Colleen, are you good with what, what we have? All right. Um, Peyton, you're welcome to come up and.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I understand the intent as well, I'm not really sure how. Okay, so say an applicant comes and files an application, wants to add on to their structure and we deny it. I'm not really sure what grounds we're approving and denying any of this on, or I'm just.
What, so what we're saying Peyton, within the, within the development code, they would be allowed to expand subject to your entities giving approval.
I follow that, I, I don't know why we would grant approval or denial in that case, I mean.
Well, I, that, I mean.
Well, here's the deal, I think that we all have to, I mean, we have to address the, the concerns of citizens, of businesses, of government. And so, I think it offers the city council the opportunity to say, yes, this development may make more sense or may not make sense. And then you have the opportunity to say yes or no.
And, and again, we're talking about making changes for the entire tier one, not just for Dilworth but for Morehead. And something, something may not make sense to, within tier one of, of Dilworth, but, but maybe through an application process, uh, that we don't know about, maybe it would make sense to the city of Morehead. So, all as we're saying, within what we're doing is we're given, you know, basically, you know, the city fought for number one in, in, in this deal and you still have every ability to control what goes on in that area. And about, all as we're saying is, don't, you know, we don't, we as a county don't, don't want to be the ones to rule things out when it comes to an in- individual application that might go forward. That's all it's saying, cause you still, you'll still, you'll still have your control on that expansion, whether it happens or not.
Yeah, I follow, I guess it, I don't know, there's just no real clear, it's more like it's just going to come to us and we deny it, then we become the bad guys in the situation.
Well, it's.
I, I don't know, it just seems like it's just throwing the onus off the county here, uh, not to have to worry about that particular.
Well, if, I mean, if you'd rather, the county can make that decision then. I mean, that's, that's my point is I've, I feel like this gives, and if the city would rather say, we waive our right to, to do that, then of course, then the county would have to, to make, make a choice, but I mean, you, you know as well as I do that planning commissions and planning decisions make people happy and make people mad all the time. And it's probably the hardest part of being on the commission, but I feel this is an opportunity for us to appease concerns while looking flexible. I mean, that whole fair and flexible statement, I hope would be the case for landowners.
No, I follow all that and I appreciate all that. I, I do think there'll be, need to be some discussions with the cities as far as like how review processes go. Normally in a building code situation, it's not a policy, you know, it's not a council level decision. That's something that we just approve, uh, you know, in-house from a regulatory nature. It's just more of a, I, I, I don't know if this is going through a whole separate process.
Well, from.
You know.
What our proposal here Peyton, it, to me, it's quite simple.
Yeah, your, your side's simple. I, I'm just saying from, I think it's going, I think it's another level of approval that's going to come from the city level. I'm not really sure yet how that ties into, that's all I was getting to, but.
I mean, when.
I appreciate the flexibility, obviously.
When an app, when an applicant comes before us within our development code, we tell them what these nine things are in tier one that they have to, to deal with. When, and, and one of them, if it's an expansion, it goes right to item number one and it says before you can do it, you've got to go to the local city entity for approval. It's really simple, it's, and, and, uh, you know, I mean, you're, you're making the case that you don't want to have it, so you can determine that then.
Fair enough, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, that would be part of the interim use permit process, it wouldn't be part of a, a building permit application.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Something like this, do we need a roll call vote and something like that?
Yes, roll call.
Yeah, yes, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo? Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
All right, so the, uh, changes to the development code have been approved based on the recommendations of the planning commission with two slight modifications. All right, um, we're done with that, uh, topic. Um, we've got Kurt here to give us an annual update and then we'll, we'll take a short break. And we're going to get an update from our veteran service officer. This is going to be colorful, I'm sure.
I don't know how to use this computer.
Good morning Kurt.
Is it?
And you're, uh, you're, you're allowed to remove your mask for your presentation.
Oh, that's right.
Easier to understand.
In here Darren? But there's somewhere.
Now, we got, we have issues here?
Someone delete me? That's just perfect. Oh, look at you, all smart. You guys ready?
We're ready Kurt, good morning.
Eric, Commissioners Kurt Cannon, veteran service officer. I, I know I don't come before you very often, so, uh, I don't know if it's a treat or a good thing or a bad thing, but.
Would you like to do a weekly report for me?
No, I would not. And I promise you, I won't tell you we're the best, cause that's just a given. I do have this fancy pointer.
You're not in the running yet.
You know, I, I wa- I watched the other ones, that's why I said that. On, boom, oh, well, that didn't even show up on there, does it? Well, now it just threw me off, might as well go home. I was going to play laser tag with you. A veteran service officer, probably one of the smallest departments you have, but, uh, probably the highest impact of revenue in Clay County uh, for our veterans that we bring in money to Clay County and I'll explain how we, uh, how we do that. Veteran service officer consists of myself, uh, as the VSO and, uh, veteran service rep Jennifer. Uh, our jobs interchangeable, we do the same exact job. You know, I'm a pretty honest guy, she probably does a little more than Kurt does. Uh, but, uh, very talented person.
Well, should we change that PDQ then?
Yeah, well, I'll look into that. Uh, we have an admin assistant Bonnie, uh, slash referee. Uh, it's, uh, always a, uh, good time in our office, we treat it family, uh, and there's only two of us, so we, we almost have to have that relationship and personality in our office, so. Uh, we do run with twelve volunteers, they come in at noon to four thirty, uh, Bonnie is halftime. A couple key points in, uh, twenty twenty, uh, we identified through the state thirty-seven, thirty-six, uh, veterans, um, give or take. through the state 37, 36 veterans, give or take. We serve more, we serve less, some from other counties that we try to help out as well. So the ultimate goal is to assist a veteran. And if we have time to do that with other counties, we will. Four hundred fifty-nine hours of volunteer, that's down considerably because of COVID. We usually run in the eleven, twelve hundred volunteer hours. And that's in volunteer hours volunteering for us and outside of our office at the VF for the American Legion, or any events that would happen outside our office, they get volunteer hours. Soldier State Assistance Program, financial assistance, that is up for 2020. It's a hundred and fifty thousand that, for grants that we did for veterans. Minnesota offered thousand dollar grants and three thousand dollar grants for veterans that we, since COVID, continuously apply. The money is very limited now, but at the start, it was six, seven million for grants throughout the state. So we, we did quite a bit of those applications, four-page applications during COVID, so they get their thousand or follow on three thousand dollars. We were sipping of the operational enhancement grants, so I do this grant every year. It's a twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant. And that is why I don't come very often here. That is my expense money usually for the veteran service officer, primarily for travel for our national accreditation, which is in another state, usually. But 2020, they did not do. In 2021, they are doing it virtually. So 2022 is in San Antonio, and maybe that will be, hopefully, in my case, in my, in my military history, that will happen, because that's where I started. So it'd be nice to go back and visit. Allocated by the board here, the twenty-five dollars, five thousand dollars to the fund for the CARES funding, and that's been utilized already, helping veterans. We, we try to use grants outside of that CARES funding first, before we use our money. We always look for resource of other people's money before we use ours. So that makes, we can disseminate that amount of money.
And that, that just for the board, Kurt, was in the first CARES, that was before you two were served on the board. So just, you're aware of that.
Yes, sir. And then that's allocated just for Clay County. Our fund is actually Cast Clay, but it's subdivided into our fund, so we can access that money just for Clay County, because it is Minnesota money. So, and that's held by the endowment fund, Fargo Moorhead, the money, all, all our money. We have no money on hand. We're nationally accredited, me and Jennifer, meaning that we have to be certified with CEUs every year to aman our accreditation with national service organizations, so we can help with claims. And I'll get into those. Unemployment rate, you can tell this is 2020's, actually 2019's, 2020 hasn't come out yet, but we are, our employment rate is point seven, as, as far as the record reflects for 2019, which is considerably low. And always functional zero for our veterans. And that's meaning identified veterans that are homeless, we, we offer our resources to try to get them housing and get them back on their feet. So... Uh, I should have been on that slide when I explained it all to you, huh? Yeah, yeah, that's me, right there.
Uh-huh.
All right, all right. Hey, my wife's watching, by the way. She's probably laughing from Mayville. So, we're the county veterans. We're the liaison for federal, state, and county VA benefits and programs. Just look at us as the one-stop shop. We have a veteran, they come in, they, it starts out with a conversation, and we identify the avenues of approach to see what resources we can offer to better suit their needs. We advocates, we're definitely advocates, both locally, state, and national, for our veterans. We work with the vet and their dependents on their entitlements. We actively assist all the forms. They don't have, they don't do this every day. It's not their job, it's our job. We help with all forms, filling out those forms for them and get them processed properly. We work with Minnesota Department of Veteran Affairs, also to include North Dakota Department of Veteran Affairs. We are, we have a memorandum of understanding with North Dakota, so we do work with the North Dakota as well. VA Claims Office, medical centers, national organizations, public and private agencies. So we have resources at our fingertips that we can access. If we don't have the answer, we know the person that does have the answer. So a veteran will not leave our office basically without an answer, of where to go and where to find the answers. So, management of benefits. Here's some of the organizations, the Legion, the AMVETS, American Veterans, the DAV, Disabled American Veterans, Vietnam Vets of America, North Dakota, and then the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Those are all at the regional office, most of them in Fargo, that we work with. In my, in my lecture here, when I say "we," it's because it's a team effort here. I, I solely don't do this by myself. We, we, we do this with three staff, and so the "we" is all of us. So we work with the, we get a veteran, and we work with Minnesota, state programs, local programs, national service office, and the VA administration, as, as far as that. We have local resources, MACV, Minnesota Assistal Council for Vets, and they help with housing and lighting and utilities. And we also have the state grants we comply for, optical, dental, and housing as well. The DD-214 is the holy grail of a veteran. When I first started, I started working people that wasn't even a veteran, so I learned a quick hurry to look for their documentation before wasting my time on a full-blown-out process to see if they're... So this is what we go look for first. This is your active-duty discharge form. And this gives, paints a picture for us when we find that. It's, it's a time they served, a place they served, a job they served, and then their performance and character while serving. So those are important to us on benefit-wise. Each one holds a certain eligibility requirement for the pension. We do work with Guard and Reserve, if they've never been active duty. And they have an NGB-22, so we, we do try to. They're very hard, benefit-wise, but we still try our luck. Kind of some areas for us, pension, very difficult, new rules. Jennifer does most of the pensions in our office. We do education and training, and counseling, you can add to that, and accounting, and multiple hats in that area. Home loan guarantee for veterans, it's a certificate of eligibility we do for them. Veterans or National Guard members can get this certificate of eligibility for a home loan, and that's sent to St. Paul. We do some life insurance. Burial and memorial benefits are a lot of work and done in our office as well, and that's for the widow, for benefits for them. And headstones and footstones, we have examples of those. And then the free earns for Minnesota veterans are all on display in our office. Healthcare eligibility into the VA, a lot, seventy-five percent is that disability compensation for veterans. And that's where it promotes the, the money situation. Compensation's based on disabilities which incurred in or aggravated while in service. So we have to tie their current situation to a service connection, meaning did it happen in service? So it's a, a process there. And for the survivors, they have an opportunity for like a widow's pension, if, if there's certain eligibility requirements are met. So, a lot of thought process into each, each communication with a veteran. It's multiple avenues we could go. And that's kind of the thing, aggravated service connection. Now, you can get incurred. It was a direct service connection. It happened directly while in service. You aggravated a pre-existing injury while in service. A secondary is a, you've already service-connected for one, and this happened because of this. So that's a secondary condition. Prime example is neuropathy, peripheral, tingling numbness, secondary to diabetes. And they already have diabetes connected. So you can, you can go all day long down a secondary. Presumptives are campaign, war campaigns, you're Korean, you're Vietnam, you're Iraqi, all carry some presumptives, meaning the VA has conceded these diagnoses to be automatically service-connected if you have these diagnoses. So, that's where we go. We, we initiate the claim. You must meet with me or Jennifer. The claim development is huge, sending for records, evidence gathering, setting up multiple appointments with the vets to bring in paperwork. And then we submit the claim to be rated by the VA. They get an appointment, it's an evaluation. That evaluation is then decided, and then we notify the veteran on the decision and the benefits that go along with that percentage. There are certain levels and certain additional benefits with each percentage. So, we meet with them multiple times before we go. So during that process, the revenue is, as in nineteen, we had a hundred and fifty-two claims with one point two million dollars. And state awards, those are those grants, optical, dental, housing, that we submitted, we sixty-nine thousand. And we completed nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and thirty forms. Twenty twenty took a hit in federal awards, but increased significantly in the state awards due to the COVID grants. Seven hundred and sixty-one thousand into Clay County. When I say that, it's veterans of Clay County. It's their money, their revenue goes up, with the intent of them spending that money in Clay County. And that goes as far as property tax exemptions as well, at a certain percentage. Our state awards went up to a hundred and fifty thousand. We still got considerably high forms, and that's a lot of COVID forms, seventeen ninety-seven. We have projections of one hundred and thirty-eight claims in 2021, with a two-point-three-million-dollar projected revenue for Clay County veterans. And state awards at a hundred and sixteen thousand. We're still doing those. It's, they fallen on, everybody's fallen on hard times. We try to get them additional money. Utility bill can gets paid, those numbers fall into there, and we get help with the state. Projected two thousand fifty forms, so we are on projecting, probably for the one, is probably the highest year. I've been here since the end of fifteen, so. The thing that, the COVID response was more tracking of our forms, so we'd have to do it by phone and mail. We were only closed for the month. We totally shut down. Otherwise, we've been open face-to-face contact with our veterans. It's, what we have to do face-to-face is much easier than taking a personal statement over the phone. So... Yep. So the tracking on that is, it was the biggest hit for us. Mailing them out, make sure they come back, following up that they've been submitted with the national organization. Because if they wasn't, and it's their fault, it's always going to come back on us. So the tracking measure on those was huge for us, and still is. Just some VA, what they offer there. They just added some acupuncture and some physical, I don't know, who breaks your neck? Chiropractor service, yeah. Yeah, those folks. And so, once they get into VA, they only need ten percent or higher to access VA healthcare. And that's our original goal, get them VA healthcare benefits. They could have some copays with that, but very minimal copays. So our, our goal, when we first meet a vet that has nothing, is that ten percent service connection on any injury. So we, we strive for that, to get them in. Then they have access to all these benefits in the VA. And then they choose to drop their supplemental or their personal healthcare. It's totally up there. And we only advise, we cannot tell them what to do with their benefits. So we don't want to get down that road.
Mr. Kaylee?
Kurt, can you talk a little bit about the limited benefits on the bottom, like homeless veterans assistance, adult daycare, things like that?
Yep. Some of them require a higher, some of them require a higher percentage. I'll just do a quick example. That dental is only for a hundred percent permanent in total, not a ten through a hundred. So a hundred percent permanent, permanent total is the highest you can be. But you have to have the tag of permanent total to access the dental in the VA. So the limited requires a certain percentage. Long-term care is seventy percent or higher. And then their nursing home expenses are paid for. So that's why not everyone has access to those benefits. Veterans Treatment Court, we do participate, myself and Jennifer, with a wonderful team of folks that meet on our noon hour. Currently, we're assessing an individual to enter Veterans' Court. Right now, we have no one. But the program still exists. We do mostly virtual, not all, all virtual, and then emails when we're assessing. They enter the court system, and then they're identified as a veteran, and then they're brought to the, Mr. Melton for review, and then brought to the team, to see if they can rehabilitate this person. Death and burial? We do a, unfortunately, we, we, we do do a lot of death and burial. We are capable, and Jennifer does a, a great job with the widows and the folks, and very appreciative of our, of our staff. And, and thank you for serving.
I had an opportunity to stop in one of these service organizations here recently, and, and the management people came up to me. And first, they wanted to express their, how grateful, I haven't get, I'm not getting to you yet. But they're, how grateful they were to this county board for the CARES dollars that, that went to help them. And then it goes without saying that, that members, veterans, your, your name certainly comes up as well as Jennifer, and the good work that you do. And thank you for that. I'm, I'm hoping that we can get back to where you can do your annual open house.
Right.
You know, at some point in time, it's, it's fun to see. And I, and I think it's, for our new commissioners, you'll really get an idea of, of the commitment and the fun that your volunteers have, that, that work there.
We're not lacking fun.
You got, they got a good leader.
Yeah. Tell you, we, this is my second life, so I told them my day one, let's, let's do our work when we have work. I mean, what's the, what's tomorrow? We play as hard as we work. So, it's just three of us, so. And the volunteers break up that routine.
Make sure you, you know, send back our appreciation to your staff and to your volunteers on the good work that's done.
You're hearing you now. They only watch when I'm on it. Then I, if I mess up, that...
You don't crack a mean whip and tell them to...
No.
Okay.
No, Jennifer does that.
Yeah. That's not the...
Yes, Commissioner...
I just want to thank you for your work with the CARES dollars. The, this board was really committed to wanting to make sure that there was a pot of money for veterans if there, a need arose. And I know it took some collaboration, and so we're, it was the least we can do for all the work that you do, the member, for the members of our community. And, and I do also want to say that, you know, asking for help is not always easy. And I think you, you really treat people with the highest level of respect, that, that I hope that removes that barrier for a veteran coming in. And, and that's one thing I've, I've really appreciated about the way that you lead that department. You really do a lot with a little for most, and I...
That's right. Right.
And so I want you to know that I really appreciate the work that you continue to do.
Well, we do appreciate you all, too. The support we have, not only Minnesota, you know, supporting our veterans, at Clay County, you know, and the money's put to good use. And, and we've always displayed and promoted a family, come back and see us if you need anything. So we don't, we don't leave a page not unturned when we meet a veteran. So we appreciate you all and working with us and...
Well, we like hearing from you. And as, as always, make sure you keep us informed if there's...
Yeah.
Issues that come up that, that you think we can be helpful with.
I'll let Frank know.
Yeah. That's right, yeah. He's, he's our liaison to your...
My immediate... My immediate boss.
That's, well.
Puts that hammer down.
Aaron.
Seeing you started your career at San Antonio, I was just wondering if they have lifted the band on you so you could go to a conference on twenty twenty-two?
Only on the Riverwalk.
That's what I thought.
Only there, I gotta stay up on the highway there. Yeah, but you know, that was, what was I, nineteen? Yeah, back in nineteen eighty-nine, I was foolish.
All right, well, we're, we're kinda, we're kinda, yeah.
All right, thank you guys for everything.
We hate to cut you off, but we're cutting you off.
Yeah, that's all right, cut me off, I'll be good.
Thank you, Kurt, for your report.
Yeah, anytime.
All right. We will take a five-minute break, please. We will come back into session in our next item on the agenda, it actually refers to it as a public hearing, but it's actually a public input meeting, there's no hearing required regarding our five-year construction plan. So we've got Dave and Justin here, Dave, you want to give a little opening comments? I know we have attachment E, and I think there was a bigger handout that was provided to us this morning, so. Did everybody get the map and the spreadsheet? If you kind of want to?
No, I just got the spreadsheet.
Okay. So if you, if you want to kind of walk through this. We've got probably about, we have kind of twenty minutes for this if we can, Dave, so keep in mind the clock there.
Sure. So the first year, when we bring this to the board for, you know, initially, we start running through this, our office, then we meet with our, with our highway committee, and we go through it and see if there's any additional projects in anyone's district that we're forgetting about, or that they've, you know, that the board members have been receiving comments on. By the time it comes for approval, we, some of these projects are already let, and you probably remember that, so we've got actual costs on most of these projects on year twenty twenty-one. And then the main part of the, of the project is, or the plan is to add to the fifth year because twenty twenty is done, and we add twenty twenty-five and see where things kind of jockey around in between. For the most part, once a project gets on our five-year plan, we like to keep it on the five-year plan. If it rotates one year or something, it's something that's, doesn't happen very often, but it's not uncommon. So twenty twenty-one here, we've got projects one through nine, we've got bridge replacements, we've normally put those at the top, and those are kind of chosen by our deficient bridge list, our bridge inspectors go out annually, inspect bridges, and then depending on their conditions is where they fall on our five-year plan as well as funding. So we've got the first four projects are bridge replacements, three of them, two of them on sixty-eight, one on sixty-nine, and one on one oh six. The one on one oh six is, is, I think the resident up in there in this area has reached out to the board several times, and he's got a bridge that, it's kind of a private bridge, but they still qualify for funding under the bridge bonding program, so we added that to our, to our list. County Road Six is a mill and overlay, and that's an actual bid cost there at four hundred and ten thousand, two oh nine. Project twenty-three is already bid, that's the landfill road. Project seven is on County Road Two, and I believe that's already let as well, a little over a million dollars on that one, it's a five-mile project. It was kind of scheduled for year twenty twenty, but we had so many safety issues on another road that we did push this one back one year, but we're going to get it done in twenty twenty-one here. We've got a turn lane project, it's project number eight there, it's on our County Road Nineteen, that's a cooperative project with MINDOT and the city of Glendon, and we're about eighty percent or so through the design on that. We're working with MINDOT on utilities as well as right-of-way, so that one's come along pretty nice, but we got a couple major issues to get done before we can go to letting on that one. And then project number nine is a cooperative project with the city of Holly, it's on our County Road Thirty-three, it's an urban reconstruct, and that's actually further in our agenda for approval, but that, that good project, bid coming good on that one, and things are moving along nice. Any questions on twenty twenty-one? All right. On page two is our planned projects for twenty twenty-two, and it's projects ten through twenty-one. Again, we've got the bridge replacements at the top of the page, based on conditions, and we've got one on County Road Ten, one on County Road Seventeen, one on County Road One, that will be in conjunction with the grading project up there, and then we got one on County Road Thirty-seven, up in Goose Prairie Township. This is a, a real big year for getting some really highly, heavily-traveled roadways replaced and made some upgrades. Project number fourteen is on County Road Twelve. As you can see about in the middle of the page, it's got ADT, which stands for average daily traffic, sixty-five hundred cars a day, so it's one of the more heavily-traveled roads in the county. We've got that one on there. Project fifteen is on Highway Fifty-two, another major roadway. We haven't done anything on this road for over twenty years, so it's going to be really nice to get that one replaced. We've got another project, Project Sixteen is on County Road Thirty-One, south of Holly. We've got federal dollars on that one as well on Fifty-two, so it's kind of nice to get those federal dollars to stretch our amount of work that we can do, because gas tax dollars, we can't get it all done. I think I'm gonna have to get a drink of water here shortly. Project seventeen and eighteen is on County Road One. I might have messed up on Project Twelve, that's the North Broadway Bridge, I think I called it County Road One, which it is County Road One, but we put a little placeholder in there, that's the bridge that we actually closed. As you can see, there's no dollars in there, but we did want to have a placeholder, because I believe we're going to have to do something, whether it's a pure retrofit, replacement, or something. So we, we put it in there as a placeholder only, and we're currently working with City of Fargo, as well as an engineer to figure out, you know, what the impacts are going to be and where we need to move forward on that. Project seventeen and eighteen are on County Road One, grading and bridge replacement, and projects twenty is on Highway Seventy-five. That's a new project, but it's in an area that goes to a pretty major asphalt plant, and the roadway is falling apart, and it's, we're going to have to do something there. So we don't have this one completely scoped out yet, but I just think with the condition of the roadway, it's gonna, it's gonna land on its plan whether we like it or not. And then project twenty-one is on County Road Three, that was a previous project, and that's just a mill and overlay up in that MB Johnson Park up to Crystal Creek area. Any questions on twenty twenty-two?
All right, continue on then.
All right, twenty twenty-three. We've got two bridge replacements, one on Nineteen and one on sixty-nine. And then project number twenty-four, we follow up with the asphalt paving on the previous year's grading project on County One, two-mile paving job. And then on project number twenty-five, we're out in the east of the city limits of Yulin, up in the very northeast part of the county. That's going to be a nice project, it's going to need to see a little work up there, and it's nice to spread the, spread our dollars around and do work in various parts of the county. Projects twenty-six and twenty-seven, we applied for a local road improvement grant on this one, so I'm really hoping that we hear something midsummer on that, would be nice to get picked, but if we don't, we would like to do a full-depth reclamation on the west, one point seven miles, essentially from the Buffalo River to County Road Nineteen, that goes straight north out of Glendon. And then from that, from County Nineteen, east all the way to Highway Nine, we would just do a mill and overlay. That section is a little newer on the east side, it does have paved shoulders. The west side does not have paved shoulders, and the, the roadway is extremely aged, and the actual, it's crumbling, the white, the white edge line is actually crumbling off, it's, and it's narrow, it's got drop-offs on there, very important project, so. If we do get local road improvement grants, dollars, we will accelerate this, it'll probably be in, right, is that FY twenty-two?
Well, if you, if we're lucky enough to get the local road improvement grants, too, that also would free up about one point eight million dollars to, to bring in other projects.
Yep, absolutely. And then the last project on twenty twenty-three, project number twenty-eight, is on County Road Twenty-six, and this is probably the stretch that we hear the most calls on as far as having a lot of wheel rutting. There's a lot of heavy truck traffic comes on this one, and we've been, we're going to continue to work on Twenty-six until we get it done all the way to the Red River, but this would be the first project in there. Again, we'd like to do that, a project like this today or, or in twenty twenty-two, but there's only so many dollars, and the, the projects are, are in line as they are, but anyway, we're going to try to get to this one. Any questions on twenty twenty-three? Okay, twenty twenty-four, it's projects twenty-nine through thirty-six. The first two projects shown are up in Georgetown Township, those are box, yeah, box culverts, bridge replacements. Project thirty-one is in Mill and Overlay on County Road Eleven, so that's from the Felton Piler up to the Norman County Line. It's about a, what is it, five-mile project? There's, there's a decent amount of traffic up there, there's four hundred cars a day. I mean, it's not staggering amount, but yet there's, there's a lot of users up there, a lot of trucks up there, and I know the condition of the roadway generates a fair amount of calls, and, and what we want to do is, we want to improve the surfaces up there for these, these people, so they can get their crops in and out of the field and to the market. Project number thirty-two is a bridge replacement, that's an actual bridge, that's by the Glendon Piler down there. That bridge has been on our radar for over ten years, but believe it or not, the condition just doesn't, it, up until now, it hasn't warranted funding replacement dollars, so it finally got to a condition, not saying it's falling apart, but anyway, all the elements together have finally got to a point where it's funding-eligible, so that was kind of nice to see. Project number thirty-three, it's on our County Twenty-six, again, that's another extension, and that would be a section from County Road Nineteen to Highway Seventy-five, it's a nine-and-a-half mile stretch, pretty big stretch for us, but we realize we got to kind of partition this thing and do as big a chunks as we can. Project number thirty-five, that's also a newer project, it's kind of, I think I might have missed one. Project thirty-four is County Road Nine in Dillworth, and that's new as well as project thirty-five, I kind of lumped those in there. We're trying to replace some of the infrastructure within the small cities, so I know we've been kind of working with the city of Dillworth, they've been doing all kinds of overlays within their city and, and wanting to kind of partner with us, so this is kind of nice timing on this one. County Road Nine goes from Trunk Highway Ten up to County Road Eighteen, it's two miles. And then County Road Forty-five, most people probably don't know it, but from this, from the signal there, it goes south to, I think, Second Street, and it goes east over to the Railroad Yard, and then north back up to Highway Ten, that's a little U-shaped piece there that's actually a state aid highway, so. So we're going to do a mill and overlay on that one. And then the last project here is our Eleventh Street Underpass, that's a project that we've been requesting additional funds from the city as well as MINDOT, and we were able to stretch this as far as we can, and we're looking at a participation level of about one point five million dollars. And I guess from what I've heard from Commissioner Campbell, this is very, very important, as we all know, and we feel like, you know, give as much as we absolutely can. Initially, they had requested five hundred thousand, and we signed resolutions, and then when they did get, the project was selected, and they started dialing it in a little bit, they realized they were close to like thirty million dollars short, so I, or maybe it's even more than that, it's like forty million dollars short. And I know MINDOT has kicked in over twenty million, City of Morita has like roughly five to ten million dollars of additional funds, so I think it's only fair that all parties involved can kick their level up a little bit.
I think there, I think the city came back and asked us to adjust ours from what was the five hundred to two million, right? And, and we don't have that full amount in here, because we also looked at, by the time it's needed, that we currently, and for our new commissioners, we do have some agreements with them now that we're paying for previous projects, Thirty-Fourth Street, and then there's also one along the, by the height, the new school.
Right, Twelfth, Twelfth Avenue.
Twelfth Avenue, and those, those, those will expire, I think, in twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
Or something like that, so there's a potential that we could just shift some of those dollars down the road, too. Obviously, we want to, we want to do our part to make sure that this project doesn't stall or fail because of a lack of local funding, so we've got to, you know, we're going to do what we can through our, through our process, understanding that, that's a, that's a massive, you know, I keep, I have to remind our, our highway committee that, that, that is a county road all the way up to Center Avenue. So a significant portion of that work that's being done is going to be done on county road. And, you know, so if you're, when you, in terms of traffic counts and stuff like that, the investment there is, and then the, the ability that we see even from an economic development standpoint by having that infrastructure there is, would be tremendous for both Morita and Clay County, so. So we'll, you know, so that's kind of where that's at right now, that's, that can be ongoing. We've, we haven't made any formal commitment to the, to, actually, that request didn't come from the city, it actually came from MINDOT, is, that's where the request is from for us to move, go from five hundred to two million. And we haven't responded to that yet, but I think what we can show them is if you're agreeable to this five-year plan right now, we can tell them that that's, you know, kind of what we're intending right now, but it's, it's, we have a placeholder for it to try to help, I guess.
Right, I think that's kind of where we're at.
Absolutely. The other thing to kind of note that I didn't really go through, but I think I'll point it out now, if you look towards the bottom of the page, there, it shows the state aid regular construction balance in blue, and you'll see one million nine sixty-five, two eighteen in parentheses. So the reason it's in parentheses, that means we're looking to advance those dollars. So we've spent all the dollars that we have been allotted in twenty twenty-four, plus an additional one point nine six million. And the counties have the ability to leverage one additional allotment, which our allotment is projected about three point seven. So we haven't, you know, advanced our full amount, but it's quite a bit of our full amount, you know, and we like to try, you know, and that's a process that we've done quite frequently, but I just want to let, let everyone know that we are getting pretty close to the actual amount we could leverage, so when Commissioner Campbell says that's kind of all the money we have, that's kind of all the money we have, so.
And it's, you know, it certainly is, we've actually done that to take advantage of, you know, because we're, we're pretty much getting interest-free money, but we're, we're getting projects done, you know, in advance of when the funds are available to us, so. And I, and I do want to point out that originally in our five-year plan, Dave and Justin, we had, we had had three point seven million dollars, but we had actually, for a couple of those years, we had backed it down to three point two.
Right.
And now we're moving, if you notice now, we're, we're staying at the three point seven, I think we're, I think we have a level of confidence that, that, you know, that, that dollar amount probably is not going to go down, if anything, hopefully it'll go up, so.
Even this year, it's kind of a, a bad year due to COVID, we got three point six.
Yeah.
In the previous, like twenty twenty, I think we had three point nine, before that was three point seven, so we've been consistently higher than the three point two.
Yeah, so, so by going from that three point two to three point seven, we were actually able to probably incorporate even a couple more things that may not otherwise have been done in this, in this process, so.
Okay. All right, the last year, twenty twenty-five, it's, it is quite a ways out there, and sometimes it's, it's hard to dial in exactly what you're, you know, what, how things are going to go, but what we've tried to do is figure out where we want to go next, where we feel like our priorities are, where the, where the needs are, where we're getting some of the complaints from. The first three projects are bridge replacements, two in Hagan Township and one in Barnesville Township. Project number forty is paving on County Road Two, so that's from the Red River to the tieback levee, so just about to Highway Seventy-five. And then project number forty-one is on Twenty-six, and I think that is probably the last stretch, so by twenty twenty-five, we'll have that thing paved from, basically from the gravel pits all the way to the Red River. That last piece is three point five miles. And then project number forty-two is on County Road Thirty-four, it's a mill and overlay from County Road Eleven to Trunk Highway Nine. So that was another project, brand new, we kind of circled back, I believe that's the oldest, one of the older stretches, and, and you can see it, it's most falling apart, it's got the most potholes, it's got the most patches and that sort of thing, so that's a seven-mile stretch on County Road Thirty-four, it's kind of nice to get back up there, it's been on my mind for quite a while, and now we're going to try to get back up and do some improvements on Thirty-four. At the end of twenty twenty-five, down in blue again, we're advancing about one point one million dollars, so it doesn't always work out that way, if you get good bids, obviously, but planning dollar-wise, we got to start with something, and we are, like I said, about a million dollars in excess of our allotment, so we're trying to put as much projects as we can on here, and then hopefully, depending on how bids come in and how we do, I learn the work out in the field and keep things on track.
Yeah, there's two things that can impact that negative number, that blue number, one is the project bid, and then the other one would be if we're fortunate enough to receive more than three point seven million, that also would help bring that number down, so.
Mr. Mojo.
I, I know we've had several
I, I know we've had several discussions in terms of commodities and how hauling of those commodities really change the, the, um, road deterioration, and I appreciate the fact that you've addressed, uh, a significant amount of the major haul routes on this, I think to make sure that we're addressing that, I think as, as bigger projects in the area continue, and we know there are a couple on, um, that are going to happen, I think it's important to have, have a, a list of these projects, that if we do, for some reason, there's some funds opened up, we address those, because, um, you know, there's some, some roads in eastern and northeastern Clay County that are really deteriorating because of pits, and, um, we're going, those are going to deteriorate at a rate faster than the others, and, and so to make sure that you're continuing to look at where we stand with funds, but also where some of these roads are, um, to move them up if needed. I think this, this, this plan, though, does address some of the deficient roads that we've talked about in the past few years, so I appreciate that.
And, um, as Commissioner Gross and I sit on the Highway Tracking Committee, too, we, um, we, we try not to influence what goes on here, we try to, um, listen to, um, most of these are recommendations from our highway engineers based on exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner Mojo, and that's, and that's the wear and tear and the current condition that they're in, and, and when they need to fit into the plan to get them fixed before they become a much more costly, um, deal, so, and again, we, we have limited funds on an annual basis to work with, but never enough for all the road work that we need, but. I know, uh, I know we have, this is a public input meeting, and I know we've got Wayne here, and, and I don't know if anybody else cares to comment, Wayne, if you want to, if you want to say something, um, we, we would ask that you go up to that podium and talk into the mic, please, and, and, um. I don't, do we have anybody else online that, Colleen, that do we know of that's, okay? Is that, is that a green button on, on your?
I pushed it once and.
There you go.
No, it's, uh, green circle there. I live along Clay County Hundred and Thirteen, um, it was last worked on in nineteen thirty-nine, that's eighty-two years ago. For the last thirty years, that has been the most washboardy road in the county, and I've been hearing that, uh, eastern half of the county gets equal attention as the west half, which is, uh, anybody tries to tell you that, the residents out there sure don't believe it, I mean, it's a crock of bull for, uh, that's a mucker road, if a, uh, county vehicle plowing snow or grading drops the wheel off the side of it, they can roll. There's many, there's places on the road that's below field level, as soon as it snows, it's a snow trap, and we're late or slow to get it opened up. I have taken my tractor and blow, rotary blower and blowed from my, from my home to County Thirty-three, and once I got that opened up, went out, and when I get over west of Highway nine, or I should say east, no, excuse me, when I get west of Highway nine, I have seen roads that have, county roads that are on the fifth pass for snow removal, and ours is still blocked. That isn't quite fair. The, there's pla, several places on the Hundred and Fifteen in that three-mile stretch that there's absolutely no ditch, semis can drive loaded out, out of the field onto the road and take about a six-inch drop for to get down to road level. You talk about million-dollar a mile, um, construction for some of these roads, uh, for a few thousand, you could do the entire three miles to get the, uh, ditch banks, back slope that it was safe, that if you dropped the wheel off the top of the road that there would be, you wouldn't roll, and very little, uh, work would, uh, raise the road up enough that the snow could blow across it instead of being a snow trap. And I mean, for the, forty years ago, we had a petition for all the residents that lived along that stretch, came up and requested that we build a road, or work on the road to alleviate some of the problems. When they walked out of the meeting room, that request went in File thirteen, and that was it. Two years ago, Chairman of the group here said, and I quote, "That road is beyond repair." Yet it isn't on the, uh, five-year plan to, uh, for have any work done on it. There's eleven residents and one commercial business along that road, it used to be a state aid road before all of the commissioners lived within a short distance of Morehead, and, uh, um, they pulled the state aid designation off of the road to build up another road. I'm guessing it was past the county commissioner's house, because that seems to be, uh, a lot of more priority than, uh, an ordinary citizen out in our area. The people won't drive on that road because it's been so rough, it shakes the vehicle apart, uh, uh, front-end alignments are, every year, uh, occurrence for all the vehicles that drive on it, the people don't drive on it because it's been so dang rough, and, it's, uh, to the point where I'm getting kind of tired of, for the taxes I pay, just what I pay in tax could, could have fixed that road many times over, and, uh, I don't see why we should have to pay and get no results whatsoever for fixing the road. The other people have just given up, because when they come up and complain that they need a better road, it goes on deaf ears.
All right, thank you, Wayne. Dave?
Well, we've done some work out there with regard to a culvert, there's a, there's a pretty sizable pipe.
Hey, just let, let him, let him.
That's washed out, so, uh, I know Justin's got the hydraulics are done on it, survey's done on it, um, we're going to get that one included on our bridge list, uh, right now there's not bridge bond dollars available for all the projects that have been submitted to MINDOT, but, uh, this one will be added to it. Um, we have heard some of the things that Mr. Lepers talked about before, um, as far as, you know, I know he's mentioned the, the field elevation's higher than the road, and, and I talked to our maintenance foreman just this morning again on it, you know, asking if he's recognizing it as, as having major snow issues, you know, he knows where the snow trap problem issues are, and obviously he doesn't live on the road, so he doesn't know it near as well as, as the locals that do live on it, but, um, at the time, he didn't, you know, Justin, you, he didn't say anything about snow problems, and, you know, some of the other issues, as far as washboards and that sort of thing, um, that can be taken care of with maintenance, more regular maintenance, um, I think what we'd like to do is, um, continue to keep an eye on it and see if it is a road, that we do want to do a grading job on it, but I, I don't remember having any other requests for other, other locals saying that, that they want to see someone on the road, or can't drive on it, or, um, need, need a grade raise on it or something, but I don't really remember having any other people voicing concerns on it, you know, when, a few years ago, before we paved County Road Thirty-three, I think, we all remember, there was quite a few people complaining about the condition of that roadway, but, uh, on One Fifteen, I haven't really gotten a lot of other complaints that, you know, I can ask Harry if she, she keeps track of everyone that calls, see if she's got any other complaints on One Fifteen, but, um, really haven't. I guess I'd like to, you know, maybe take Frank out there, maybe we should go out and, and I know we've been on that road before, but maybe for sure, definitely take another look at it and see, and, and then maybe we can put it on our Highway Tracking Committee as an agenda item, what the dollars would be for replacement and see how it would fit into our, on our plan, and.
Now, when you do that, why don't you let me know, too, I'd like to, if it's, if I'm available, I'd like to go, too, so.
Well, I think it's important, we, you know, we did go on a road tour, I believe it was the summer before last, and it's probably appropriate with new members on the commission to do something similar. Wayne, um, you know, certainly if there is a petition of residents, we will, uh, definitely bring that forward, I'm sorry that you felt that forty years ago, it, it, it didn't get addressed, certainly that was before, um, we were, uh, in the current makeup of this board, but, um, in response to the piece about five snowplows going forward before one is broken open, I think that's an important piece to note, because, um, you know, as Wayne did say, I do live in the country, and yes, the road in front of my house did get done last year, I was not part of the recommendation on that board, that came from an engineer, the engineers, I'm also not even on the highway tracking, and as you also know, that road is not done. And, um, I think our response is to address the public safety concerns as we move towards our plan. And so I, I think that, um, making sure these roads are opened is a public safety concern, I think that, um, Dave, we certainly can work with our foreman to make sure that we are, um, conservative in terms of how we, um, what our plan is to open these roads, and, and I've been in meetings where we've talked about priority lists and make sure that, that we do get at least a lane open before we're doing multiple times on other ones, so I trust that, that you can bring that concern forward, but, um, you know, I, I certainly know that, Wayne, you're on the township board, and, and we've been in meetings with you, and, you know, there's another township member here from Morehead Township, and we, we collaborate with you, and so if you're seeing concerns that aren't being addressed, I mean, that's, that's hammered out, I mean, certainly, that's hammered out.
I would like to say also that since Peters has, uh, been, uh, or become on the county staff for road maintenance, that he's doing a much better job at trying to keep the washboards down from what they had, were in previous years, and also, I'm neglected to say that the culvert that's just east, uh, just west of my buildings washed out last spring. The reason it washed out is there was no band connecting the sections, the culvert under the road. So they dug it out last spring, and they put the, pulled the piece back in that it washed downstream, uh, a few feet, they pulled it back in and covered it up, and still didn't put any band on it. Now, that's, that's just, in my estimation, that's just asking for trouble. When that road, or when that road washes out, there's no through traffic. And there's, uh, I know the people that are coming into the commercial businesses east of my place, they go from Holly on Highway ten on Highway Thirty-two and come in from the east, because that's a shorter distance to go on that gravel road than, uh, to come out of Holly and go the short way. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I think that kind of concludes the, um, public input, I, I think we've, huh?
Did you want to speak?
Did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. All right, um, let's, uh, move on then to our, um, next agenda item, which we have, um, some items for, from Dave to go over, we have four items, and the first one is the approval of the five-year construction plan that has just been presented. I think, I think you were kind of hoping to have that, uh, done today.
Right.
Just one item of note, um, you know, I think we've had conversations, and it's, I don't think we need to add it today, obviously, but we've had con- conversation on that fifty-two drop down to County Road twelve, um, a gravel road, um, you know, it, it may be worth you putting counters on that, I, you know, I think, especially when fifty-two's under construction, there's going to be a lot more that cut through, but, but as that overpass by RDO has happened, it seems to me that the increase of traffic has really happened to get, get over to twelve, and, and that may be something that we need to look at with the City of Morehead or the township and the county, to see what the best plan is for that, because it, it does get a lot of traffic.
Right, is that the one that goes kind of by Americana Estates there and shoots down to twelve, County Road seven?
Yeah, on the west side of Americana.
Right, okay.
All right, so what's the board's wishes on the five-year plan?
Well, we, I guess we've discussed that here, we discussed it Highway Tracking, and, I mean, aside from, I'm listening to Wayne talk about this One Fifteen, and I, I took up my notes from two thousand seventeen, and, uh, I had One Fifteen on there already, and been working on that every year, but it just, we haven't gotten it on there yet because it just felt, uh, hasn't been, I don't know, you say it's bad, it's bad, and I won't take your word on that, uh, we check it out, and it's not quite ready to do the whole thing yet, so, uh, we haven't got it on that, but aside from that, we'll make a motion to approve the five-year plan, and looking at Highway One Fifteen, add it on if we can somewhere.
All right.
I'll, I'll second that motion, and just with a caveat, to make sure, maybe for the public's perspective, we should have a working list of, of areas that are, are under, um, evaluation, um, just like Wayne talked about, but also, I know we, we, a few years ago, six was really bad in that spot out by Roelag, and we did add that in, so, so maybe just to have a working list, so that citizens know their concerns are being heard, and that we, um, will go to those as funds become available.
I think, I think that's a good idea, but, but we, we have to, uh, with some degree of certainty, uh, we need to make sure that there, there is an, an understanding, the difference between a working list and what's on our five-year plan.
Right.
Because it, because some of them, if they see it's on a working list, um, it all, it all of a sudden becomes, uh, promised to them, I, I, I think back to the road that was over, um, that went over to the old church, um, up in north, north of Twenty-Six, uh, there, there was a bunch of residents there, and they, they kept saying they were promised that that road would be redone, and there was, I don't know where the promise came from.
County Road Ninety-eight.
Yes, County Road Ninety-eight, yeah. So some of those things, so I agree, you know, I, I agree, we should, we should have a list, but distinctly showing the difference between what we're kind of committed to and what we would like to do. Okay, um, so we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo, to approve the five-year plan, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign, motion carried. Item number two, authorized to advertise for the yearly supply bids.
All right, this is our, our current gravel, culverts, uh, bituminous asphalt, and rental of construction equipment, um, we advertise these, or we send out proposals to the, the likely suppliers, and on Thursday, April fifteenth, uh, at this boardroom, we'll open those up. For the most part, uh, it's a, it's a list of project, or products to use, with the exception of gravel, that's an actual bid that we will use from this contractor for this road, uh, but as far as like the culverts, the, we get multiple bituminous, uh, bids that we can use, we can go to this plant, or this plant, or this plant, so, um, we will open those April fifteenth, and then we'd like to bring them back, uh, tabulated in abstract form to this board on April twentieth.
All right, uh, request?
Move to approve authorization to advertise for the yearly supply bids.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebbinger, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carried, item number C on your agenda, approval of final contract amount for SAP zero fourteen six oh three one zero one two.
Uh, so this is the stated portion, uh, Clay County's portion of the new signal up on Fifteenth Avenue, uh, cooperated, cooperated with City of Morehead on it, so as our road, uh, County Road Three is Eleventh Street, goes north and south, we've got the north and south lights, and then the east-west lights blowing City of Morehead, so, um, our share of the project was, um, one hundred and thirty-three thousand one twenty-six twenty-three. They took care of, uh, I think we had to pay a little bit of engineering for them, for them to do the project as well, but, uh, everything went, went really good, and, uh, you know, we did the same thing in the City of Glendon with MINDOT a couple of years ago, we had to pay our share on that one as well, but, uh, I guess I'd like to get this approved, and then, um, I think we've paid most of it already, we paid ninety-five percent of it or so, so we're just kind of wrapping up paperwork, but we just need to get approval on our share of the light, since we use stated dollars on it.
Again, I, I think a reminder that, uh, that Eleventh Street going all the way from, all, all the way up, up north, all the way to Center Avenue is County Road.
Yeah.
You know, and a lot of people don't realize that, that it's, even though it's within the city, it's County Road, so. All right, so, uh.
Move approval of final contract amount for SAP zero fourteen six oh
Move approval of final contract amount for SAP 014-603-012.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of bids for Holly Urban Reconstruct.
So Justin's going to hand out the abstract. We just got that late, towards the end of the week. This is the, the county's share of the urban reconstruct in the city of Holly. I think our five-year plan had about $390,000 set aside and our share is about, is 325,70371. Like I said, that's based off of the county's, the MOU that we put together with the city of Holly and our share of those items, which essentially is 30% of the roadway and then 50% of the sidewalk and 50% of the storm sewer.
This is the one where a month or two ago, we came to the board and amended the MOU.
Correct.
Yep. So we, we tried to kind of highlight on that abstract, being that there's a lot of numbers there and we blew it up as big as we could. So it's somewhat readable. But all in all, prices came in pretty good. Our share is less than our planning dollar share. It is a little higher than their engineer's estimate. I think that was like around 312 or 313,000. There again, considerably less than we had set aside for planning dollars. This project is on our five-year plan. It's project number nine and it's going to be, you can see it's in orange there, that would be municipal state aid dollars. So we get regular construction dollars that can be used outside of the cities, in small cities. And then we get a separate funding source for municipal construction, so within the small cities. So, yeah, so I mean, prices came in good on that one. It's 16 and a half percent under our, our five-year plan. And we'd like to get approval to move forward on it. I know the city still has to do an assessment hearing, their final assessment hearing. And we're pushing them based on that. I don't think they're having many issues with anything and the prices came in good. So trying to get them to award it so we can get moving forward because there's a, there's a lot of things that have to get purchased, culverts and pipe and, and different things, as well as shop drawings for some of the manholes need to get approved and that. So I'd like to, let's get this going as fast as I can so that we can get moving on it and get building on it as quick as we can.
Okay. So.
Move to approve for bid.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Dave, we'll, we'll try to get through our committee reports and we'll get our highway tracking committee going as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. With that, committee reports, I think I started to my left last week. Frank, do you want to start this? If you're ready?
Yeah. Last Wednesday, I had a wild, rice water shed board. Items were discussed. There was Goose Prairie that whether they can continue that project to get some more land. There's been a dispute on the land price, so that has to be negotiated. I know the floodplain maps for Halset and Pearly have been revised since the new road went in there or new construction went on up there. One water shed, one plan, everything's been settled there. All parties have now approved that, I think, including Becker County. They're still concerned about some ditch maintenance going on. There's a farmer that's concerned about, as they cleaned out the ditch, they put the spoils on his land and he's not too happy about that. So something's being worked out there to clean off the spoils again. Beyond the, Wednesday, Thursday, excuse me, had beyond the yellow ribbon. Mostly discussed there was the deployment of some of the soldiers that were going over. See, that was the main discussion going on there. Personnel issues committee, we had on Friday, there we, the first item we discussed was the replacement correctional officers, which we took care of at the meeting today. I'm sure you've been reading some of the, excuse me, some of the changes that are coming into effect with our sheriffs across the river or the law enforcement items is because of some deadly force, deadly force statute changes. So we discussed that item. We looked at extending the sick leave coverage for employees with COVID, of their sick leave. That's a policy where they were given 80 hours of sick leave if they were involved in COVID. We talked about lobby over at the Family Service Center about having the officer and not officer security there. And that was discussed and we'll report more on that later. I think we extended it one month from now or what do we, through the second quarter? Okay.
I think we're through the second quarter for.
Yeah, we've already done that for the Family Service Center, right?
Correct.
And then we discussed the contract tracers too, whether we're going to extend that. Yesterday, I had Minnesota Rural Counties, a lot of discussions, still some discussion on the, on the Minnesota Clean, Clean Car Act. It's still there. They're looking at adopting the California policy and pretty much, we have taken the stance and that the Minnesota Rural Caucus is against the policy of adopting that policy. So I think some of the counties have already made up a resolution that they are against it. But I don't know, since the Minnesota Rural Counties has taken that stand, I don't know. We have to have separate resolutions for each county. So.
I would also just note the, part of the resolution that we voted against yesterday was that this action has taken the public input process out just because of the timeline. And so the wording on the resolution was also that we do not support making changes of this magnitude without input from citizens and/or the legislative process. So that's important too.
Some other things that were discussed was the wild game processing. They're very concerned about, people can't process their own wild game in their own garages and stuff like that. And they're looking at getting that changed, that they don't change that. Talked about broadband funding. And another thing that they're working on is the county engineers. Right now, the county, if you hire a county engineer, he has to be a citizen, a resident of Minnesota. So like if our neighboring counties, whether it's a neighboring county to the states of North Dakota, South Dakota, whatever, or it could be a county in the central part, if someone applies from Canada or whatever, you know, you can't hire them right now if they're not resident of the state of Minnesota. So they're looking at trying to get that changed too. That covers my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I, on Tuesday, had the extension committee. We're in the process of hiring for the regional director position. So we had an applicant review meeting. On Wednesday, I had the Clay County Extension Committee update. We had board elections. We had a good update from 4H on how they are continuing to stay busy even with a different looking climate. They're continuing to put out lots of different activities and curriculum for 4Hers in Clay County. We had a great update from Master Gardeners as they are continuing to go forward. They do have really increased their numbers in participation. They do have a handful of interns that will be working with them over the, the course of the next year. And I did recommend to them, since we do have our new Clay County Government Center, if there's any ability to coordinate on landscaping. I know we were putting that sign out on the boulevard. They were interested in, in helping in whatever way they could, with it be potted plantings or that area. So more to come from them. We had a great update from Horticulture. Randy is continuing to stay really busy with writing articles and you'll hear him on the news or radio frequently. That day, I also had the Cass Clay Food Partners Committee. We had a great update from the city of Dilworth. They have a medicinal garden. Lynn Park has that there. Really an interesting perspective. And an update on the Fargo Boulevard Garden Ordinance that had been passed. The city of Fargo had requested a little more document tracking and simplifying the flow of that. So we had a good update from Kim Lepetsky on that. Trent Wise gave us an update on the Morehead Edible Forest that will go up at Emby Johnson Park. There's some really good opportunity to help with plantings. I believe they're going to do those plantings in the next month. So if you're interested, head over to the city of Morehead's website to find more information or give Trent a call. We had an update from the Cass County pesticide, an update on the Cass County pesticide use. There was, as you recall, some concern last year with butterflies and the mixing of that chemical. It just got a little hot. So steps that they're taking to prevent that in the future. And a really good update on the Growing Together Community Food Garden from Deb Haugen and Nola Storm. And I also had the Red River Basin Commission Joint Powers Board meeting. We haven't met for over a year because of COVID, so it was good to get together with that group. We had an update, PowerPoint presentation on pollinators and pollinator health and the rusty patch bumblebee. And then we had a good dialogue between the different counties as to trends that they're seeing with, with different projects and/or COVID effects and CARES Act dollars. That is a really good opportunity to have dialogue with different commissioners from basically all across the Red River Basin. So I appreciate the opportunity to attend that. Thursday, I attended the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. Tony Nelson has been the Farm Bill biologist, the Pheasants Forever Farm Bill biologist there. And he has now been hired by the Clay County Soil and Water to work on a lot of their water quality issues. And he'll be a really great addition to that department. We're really excited there. Update on trees, there still are some trees available. And if you need, contact the Clay County Soil and Water. And then we had a really long discussion on the MOU agreement. As you know, we share that building with NRCS and the USDA office. And because of differences in policy for opening of offices during COVID, that's become problematic. So I encourage them to contact Steve or Darren to, to talk a little bit about how that policy affects Clay County, the Clay County Office. Friday, I was asked by Kirk Rosenberger to attend a meeting out at the landfill. Everett Nelson was also present. There's been some, a letter from MPCA in regards to contamination, just questions. And that committee determined that it would be in our best interest to just do some periodic sampling of those wells to make sure that there's no contamination. Boy, if you want to feel like not the smartest person in the room, start listening when those hydrologists start talking about contamination. So they do a really great job. And then Friday, I had all day, we reviewed all of the applications for the regional director for the extension. That's tricky in a COVID environment, but I think that we have a really good plan forward. We should be doing interviews the next week. And I also attended the Minnesota Rural County Caucus meeting and Frank covered that well. Thank you. That concludes my reports.
All right. Commissioner Abinger.
Last Wednesday, the 10th, I virtually attended the Northwest Regional Emergency Communication Board Meeting. A lot of material was covered, I think pertinent to our region here. Brian Zastapil, who is the technical employee of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center, is also the systems administrator for Minnesota Armour and the, the emergency communication in this region. He gave a presentation. Effectively, we're going to have an additional two system-wide talk groups within this, this region. As you'll remember, the Red River Regional Dispatch Center managed to get approval for Minnesota Armour communications system to be incorporated and function over in Cass County, North Dakota. And they're now part of the Minnesota system. So they're getting, or they, we approved for them, put two additional talk groups, one for fire and one for police in there on an emergency talk group. Then we also transferred some funds to make sure Mr. Zastapil's position is paid for. Monday, on the 15th, I attended the Dancing Sky Area on Aging Meeting. We had had a one-hour orientation for new board members and then had, had the quarterly meeting. They elected a new chair, went over finance report, funding report, legislative update. One thing they do have is defining, that's in the legislature right now, is defining volunteer drivers and differentiating them from drivers for hire. That's having an impact on their volunteers' insurance. And there's legislation to actually give them a tax incentive if they do this. There was also a fairly comprehensive review of the vaccine rollout and some of the difficulties that's presented for senior citizens. We also had a speaker on broadband. Effectively, Nathan Zachariah, very much the presentation we received. New information is there's 4.6 million for broadband that came out in the American Rescue Plan. It'll be coming to Minnesota. One issue I've spent a lot of time on this week, and I'm not going to go too deep in the weeds on it, but I think it's a critical issue. I think Darren's probably going to cover it in the administrator's report from the pick committee. I met with Sheriff Empting and we ended up calling Chief Monroe over last Wednesday, the 10th, regarding the Minnesota statute that came out changing deadly force policy for law enforcement. This has caused real concern among our North Dakota partners. I don't know where they stand at this point. It does not look like, at least for the immediate, they, North Dakota officers from Fargo Police Department and Cass County Sheriffs and West Fargo will not respond to the Minnesota side. That effectively eliminates our SWAT team, our street crimes unit. I don't know where it stands with the federal task force and I've asked, I'll get into that in a minute, but the drug task force, the Marshals Fugitive Task Force, these have our deputies and Morehead's officers operating with federal credentials from either DEA or US Marshal. I don't know where they stand on that. It's a critical issue and it has seriously undermined our ability to provide law enforcement services to our residents and is impacted on Cass County's residents greatly. The law itself, I got ahold of Carly Stark last Thursday with the AMC. This has not been on their radar. This statute was passed in the second special session. It went to the Attorney General's Office and was released 11 days before it was implemented. It became law on March 1st. It changed the description on what is justified use of deadly force by law enforcement officers. It went beyond Supreme Court rulings of Connor versus Graham. It went beyond, it gave a description instead of, from the perspective of a reasonable officer. And I'd love to hear, when Brian gets back, I think he'd be interested in discussing this. It now gives a three-point checklist. If an officer decides they want to use deadly force, they have three things they need to take into consideration, make sure they can articulate it afterwards. There are a number of arguments right now on, on how sustainable this is through, through Court of Appeals, but that's not really the point. With it being released 11 days before it became law, the law enforcement officers in the state of Minnesota have not been trained where it's been very difficult to get the information out to them on this massive change on how they, how they use deadly force.
I think the ones that Clay County have been trained.
The ones have been. Initially, the discussion was Cass County would accept that training and we could, we could continue the relationship. That seems to be an issue now. I got ahold of Jeff Potts, who's the executive director of Minnesota Chief of Police Association. I was on that board for a number of years. I was on that board for a number of years and worked with Jeff when he was chief in Bloomington. They are working on this and trying to get the issue brought back up in the House at this point. He says a lot of border cities are having these issues. He specifically named Duluth Superior as having issues here with Wisconsin law enforcement. At this point, we've got House Bill File 1593, which has not come out, it's not come on the floor, it's been sent over by the Senate, but the Senate sent a bill that would put off implementation of this for 180 days till September 1st, allowing agencies to train and hopefully allowing border cities to work out some agreement with their partner agencies. One of the problems they have on this and the reason it's not come out for a vote is it's been attached to the SAFE Act, which is, is the funding of emergency response in the event of civil disorder. And this, this has made the House reluctant to bring this up for a vote. That's the situation we're in. I think we need to familiarize ourselves with the issue. I took about an hour and a half training on the Chief's Association website on the law and on the investigative response of BCA, once a police shootings occurred. So, you know, I'm somewhat familiar with it, I'm certainly not an expert, and I know there's some real strong discussions going on about the legal aspects of this. But this is going to impact on our community, and it's going to be a big impact, and I'm hoping that we can advise ourselves on it and, as a group, make a, make a statement to what we need for our community, to the state government. And that concludes mine.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee.
On Wednesday, the 10th, I attended the Clay County Extension Committee meeting, which Jenny also reported on, so nothing further there. That same day, I also attended the Cass Clay Food Partners meeting, which she covered as well. On Friday, the 12th, I attended a board training and succession, succession planning session with the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County, planning for some anticipated retirements in their future. And then on Monday, the 15th, I met with Representative Michelle Fishbox, local staffer Calvin Benson, just to introduce myself and talk about some local issues. That's all.
Thank you. On March 9th, I had a Metro Flood Executive Committee meeting. Really nothing new to report there. We continue to try to come up with a comprehensive plan for lands that we've been dealing with in terms of mitigation, so that hopefully we're going to be coming with a proposal that meets all of the suggestions by rural and cities. On Thursday, I attended the Lakes Country Service Co-op meeting. We went over the, there was a recommendation to revise the 2021 budget, and that revision sent us from what had been a projected deficit budget, because we were, for that year, we anticipated using a little bit of reserves for that budget. We went from a deficit needing to go into reserves to a positive balance of $84,000, so that was good news there. We did approve a wellness allocation for, and Clay County will get a wellness check for $2,730, I think it is.
Sorry, I didn't do the calculation, but that's.
The number that, the number that was in our packet, it showed that being the amount, so. And then we, we had a update on some proposals for 2022's insurance and the bidding process. That's going to be very interesting moving forward. I'm not at liberty to say too much, however, there is one entity that's proposing about a $30 million reduction in administrative fees. So what happens is, you know, like Clay County with our health insurance, we do a bid process, and Lakes Country Cooperative is a bidder, and it just so happens that they bid and their carrier was Blue Cross. And now there's some, I think it's more than likely that, that theirs is going to switch to Medica. And, you know, and I, you know, I brought up the concerns in the process about when we do change in coverages and policies and, and how that might incorporate the, through our bargaining contracts, how that's going to all work. So it's going to be very complicated moving forward, and there's a lot of work to do, and I, I know that Darren's going to sit in on the meats of those discussions, but I just kind of emphasize some concerns that I have with, with that, that we need to be sure that, that our Clay County family, so to speak, from the standpoint of health insurance is, is really well-educated on some of these proposals that are coming forward. The whole idea is that there would be no change in plan coverage, and it becomes more of a cost issue, I suppose. So there's a lot more going to come on that one, a lot more. And I know, Commissioner Kaylee, you're, you're now on the insurance committee as well, and so we'll probably be talking a little bit about that next week.
Yep, next Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah, so, so with that, that was the primary discussions there. We did have the PIC meeting, which an awful lot of the items have been talked about, including the deadly force issue, this COVID sick leave thing that was recommended, or that was discussed about moving that forward, and I think our recommendation, and we could probably, we didn't have it on to act on today, but next week, but our recommendation was to maybe to, to, because it expires the end of March, and our recommendation would be to go ahead and, and continue it another month, and with the idea in mind that we want to strongly encourage our, our employees that at some point in time that, that 80 hours of COVID is going to have to end, and one of the best ways for that to happen is for all of our employees to get vaccinated. And so our, you know, so we're going to keep pushing, and, and ultimately, you know, we need to, you know, and I think we'll be talking with Kathy, but, but when, when the phase opens up where all of our county employees will be eligible for that vaccine, and hopefully, hopefully we can see that by the end of April, so that, that all of our employees can be vaccinated, and there wouldn't really need, be the need to continue that COVID relief, or that COVID, that extra COVID sick pay, so. We did discuss about the opening the Government Center, the new Government Center over there to the public, and our goal is, I think we'd like to see that open.
Right.
And I think that, and we just want to make sure that, that they have the ability, our staff is pretty much protected, that's what we've been told, because of the windows and the way it's set up, but it's just a matter of making sure that while we're still in this pandemic, that, that we can have social distancing amongst our citizens who want to come into that building. And I, you know, and I think we're, I don't think there's a, an overwhelming demand for the public to go into that facility, so I think we'll be able to accomplish that based on the size that we have for the entrance. And then lastly, we did discuss the contract tracing. It expires March, and there were still significant dollars available, so we, I think we, did we set that to the end of June?
That's what we're shooting for, is the end of June. I talked to Kathy last night, or yesterday, and she said that we should have enough money to go through June.
Yeah.
The grant actually runs out in June.
Yeah, so that's kind of the plan there. We have, there was special grant dollars that were provided to Public Health to do that, so. I just want to comment, I was unaware of the Solid Waste Meeting, and I know typically when we've had meetings in the past, both Commissioner Whalen and I were both invited to that, and I don't know maybe if I was, I didn't know about it, but I, in the future, I think it, I think that's an important deal.
I think there, he knew you had a conflict.
Okay. Yeah, I, I might have, but I, I guess I didn't know.
It wasn't, it was more to get input from Everett as to.
Yeah, okay. And then I did want to mention to, regarding the Master Gardeners dealing with the new, didn't we always put a little bit of money into our budget for supporting the Master Gardeners through extension?
I don't, I don't know that specifically, but I.
I thought at one time we did.
I think we talked about that after the heavy lift that they did with the new, new, two new buildings, and so that may very well be.
I thought that we had something.
They had the funding for the courthouse, I know, because my wife worked on the project.
Yeah, yeah.
They've had that for an extended period of time. We did go out after lunch last week and just swing by the new building, and Lynn ran into people she was familiar with, and they did a walk-around. So in Master Gardeners, I know there's a different rep on there, but she's already excited about going out and planting.
I guess, I guess why I bring that up is, is we got an awful lot of compliments on the front of this building and the front of the Law Enforcement Center, and part of what we need to do, because we, you know, we're, our campus is in a, is in a setting with an awful lot of residential, and we need to make sure that we're good neighbors and we've got a good appearance for our fellow residents, and, and the same apply, will apply going over to that other facility. So I, I think we need to listen up to what potential plans are and how we can incorporate to make sure that we're good residents in terms of outside appearance as well, so. And that concludes my report. Darren, we can.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, I did neglect to report, on Wednesday, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We just had one item of note, and that will be addressed at the main policy board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
All right, one more thing to us. I have had a meeting with Roy Beal and Jason McCoy. I don't know, I think you two have already had met, have you guys?
I did, yeah, I talked about it last week.
Okay, so I guess that'll be coming up too, as far as support.
Haping. Okay, Darren, now you.
Okay, well, you've covered most of my stuff for the week, but.
Okay.
March, March 10th, we had a manager's meeting. We discussed the vaccinations and the ongoing pandemic for, with Public Health and Kathy. We gave an update to all the department heads on the Government Center. Attorney, the Otter Treasure Texts are going to be moving in the week of the 15th, which is this week, and the rest of the land records will be moving in the 22nd, and it looks like the 29th will be a good opening date for that. Had a little discussion on progressive discipline, and was put out a reminder on about the April 8th City County meeting from 4:00 to 6:00. So that was during the manager's meeting. March 11th on Thursday, I had a meeting with Lori, Steve, and myself, referenced the process for how, when citizens request a waiver for penalties and interest for late property tax payments. I think we had a little bit of an issue last week on that. So we have a, kind of a written, written down document now on how we're going to process those. On Friday, March 12th, I had a meeting with Steve Smith and Brock Buckaloo and Anna from NAS. They are our health consultants, referenced next year's health benefits and some of the options we may have for the 2020 renewal. I do have a, a meeting with Lakes Co-op this afternoon, video conference with them, and I'm sure that that's, will be the, the topic for that. That same day on Friday, we had a PIC meeting, which has mostly been covered already. I think the extending of the COVID sick leave request passed March 31st, I'll bring that to the board next one, next board meeting for your approval, but the recommendation is to look at going through April and then kind of looking at it month for month if we need to extend it, depending on how things are going with the pandemic. Still opening the new Government Center on March 29th. The, the big discussion, discussion on the PIC was whether that building will be open for the public, so that they can come into the lobby area, somewhat similar to what we do with the Law Enforcement Center now. There is no security guard or anything like that over there, but the PIC felt that it would be, the way the, the building is designed and the lobby and, and the protection between the citizens and the employees, the PIC's recommendation would be to open that up to the public when it opens on March 29th. So I don't know if that needs to come to the board next Tuesday as well. I can put that on the agenda as well.
You have to have a board action on that.
Yes, and also the Commissioner Campbell talked about the contract tracers recommending that they go through June until the money runs out. We have seen, just in the past several days, an uptick in the COVID cases amongst employees. Most of these have been in one department, unfortunately. Most of those are capable of working from home. Today, it looks like Network Center is out at the new Government Center, hooking up all the, the access levels, so your badges will work on all of the doors and we can get in and out. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. I, I do want to mention logistically here, moving forward, with our room next door going to be remodeled. Oftentimes, on Tuesdays after our commission meeting, we do have committee meetings, and to social distance, this meeting room is going to need to be used, so I, and we have one coming up right now with highway tracking, so unfortunately, I'm going to have to suggest that commissioners who are not part of that, we need to be able to move on. So we do have, you know, if you need to stick around, you do have your, the room back there. It's not big enough for our committees to do social distancing, so we, I just want to bring that up, and we need to get into that habit now, because I think, moving forward, that, that will be a courtroom next door, and we won't have access to that, so. Commissioner Ebinger.
I just want to roll back onto the law enforcement, deadly force issue. Would we be able to get the sheriff and Mr. Melton in here for our next meeting, just to give, I don't want to come in and ask this, this commission to make a decision on any action we might want to do with our legislators or the governor's office or anything else, without having staff tell us, you know, my perspective is my perspective. I think we need to hear their, their angle on this as well.
Certainly, I can get in touch with the sheriff. I mean, I think you gave a very good synopsis of what's going on there. I didn't have anything to add really, so I think we're really more worried with like the SWAT team, the bomb squad, and, you know, this, this could be coming sooner rather than later, if, you know, we have the George Floyd, we had the riots before, and there was some mutual support between Cass and Fargo and, and our, our, and Sheriff's Department, and so, you know, this could be a bigger deal if those things come to fruition.
Well, the, the day in and day out, nuts and bolts stuff of just detectives being able to come over here or go over there to follow up, the, the things that we're starting to see this impact on are concerning, but I don't want to just try and lead a charge to, to have everybody make up their mind on this. I'd love to hear from staff on it.
One of the things, and it was brought up even with the, with the clean, clean car energy thing, you know, there's one thing to, to take in a, take a position as a county on something like that, where, you know, we're all, the whole state is going to be, you know, it's going to have the same result for everybody, whereas this legislation, it does become a, a game changer for border communities, and, and we need to, we need to be able to raise our concerns as a border community, just like we do when it comes to border cities legislation that'll, that deals with taxes, you know, so, and this is something that's extremely important to us moving forward, and, and, you know, I think it would be good to, you know, maybe both, and I, I guess I wouldn't even mind if we're going to invite Brian and, and the sheriff here, is to even. I wouldn't even mind if we're going to invite Brian and, and the sheriff here is to even extend the invitation to Police Chief Monroe to get a city perspective on it as well from, from their concerns, so. Yeah, so let's, let's see if we can get that done.
Commissioner Campbell, I have just one other thing.
Yes.
The, you know, Governor Walz issued in another executive order recently, and some of the, the talk has been about the April 15th opening of some of the government centers and buildings. Some of that language has changed, so whereas it was, if you can work from home, you must work from home, and now the, the language is, the employers are strongly encouraged to allow employees that can work from home to continue to work from home. So I think it's something that we're probably going to have to look at a little bit more on, you know, when do we say, everybody back to work, or do we continue on with the work from home, if you can work from home? So I think there's some big discussions coming up and decisions on that. And I don't want to wait too long, because if the decision is to, that everybody comes back to work and we are back to normal, you know, families and stuff are going to have to coordinate daycare and, you know, all of that stuff. So I just wanted to put that out there, that that's, that's the conversation that's out there, but something that we're going to have to discuss a little bit more.
All right, well, we can certainly have that as discussion items prior to April 15th on our board meetings. Colleen, do you have anything for us? All right, so with that, we are adjourned.
Colleen.